Good evening, everyone. It is just at six o'clock. It is August 12th of 2025, and time to call to order this meeting of the City of Gallatin Council Committee. We'll begin the meeting with the roll call. Ms. Ketchel, please.
Vice Mayor Hayes.
President.
Councilman Alexander.
President.
Councilman Carter.
President.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
And Councilman Juwans.
President.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Tonight, you have the minutes from the July 22nd, 2025 council meeting for your consideration of approval.
Motion by the board.
Motion by Councilman Jones. Second by Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Okay. Any additions or corrections requested? Okay, seeing none, I'm in favor of approving the July 22nd, 2025 council committee meeting minutes. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Minutes are unanimously approved. We'll move now to public recognition. This is a work session committee meeting. All of our public comment will be at the beginning of the meeting, so whether it's something that's on the agenda or something that's not on the agenda, you are welcome to speak to it. You will have five minutes to speak. There are a lot of people here tonight, and so I would ask you to be considerate of the time. I will be running a timer, and the alarm will go off when you reach your time. We do need your name and your address for the record, and just to ask that we all be kind to one another. And help me, too, because it probably doesn't sound loud to y'all out there, but we hear it up here, and it's kind of distracting, so if you just kind of refrain from chatting too much, that would help us as well, and I appreciate that. But with that, public recognition is now open, and you may come forward if you would like to speak. Now, I think that someone here wants to speak. I could have closed that really quickly, but I knew better. Mr. Shulte.
I flew here just to get here, Mayor. From Florida, just to see you. I'm Mike Shulte, 1489 Boardwalk Place, Gallatin, Tennessee. I just want to update you on some numbers. Gallatin Marina has 23 slips open today, available. They discontinued their boat rentals due to lack of revenue. Fuel sales this year, this summer, is down 35 to 40% over the last two years. They have a preliminary approval and the ability to add 150 wet slips and 60 dry storage slips. Okay? Cherokee Marina, they have 30 open slips. No boat rentals themselves due to lack of revenue. They have approval for 10 more wet slips, but not in the progress as they have leased what they have today. The environmental assessment submitted to the Corps was a complete joke. The boat registration growth was severely overestimated. They counted every boat registered to all counties surrounding Nashville and Gallatin, yet only counted slips on Old Hickory Lake. They also didn't acknowledge the existing marinas built over 950 slips within their current lease areas. This proposed development will bankrupt surrounding marinas. Just as a side note, we do have 1,761 voting opposition neighbors to this development in Foxland and Fairview and Douglas Bend. 1,761 voting opposals. Okay, council, before you, you have the proposal that against all attempts by the neighborhood and through citizens' objections, continues to go down a path that those who vote for the project as presented will regret. Within your attached traffic study and exhibits is a study and discussion concerning traffic impacts and the access points to the proposed development. I have been one of the first people to point out that the original study did not include a study of access to the only proposed boat ramp currently at Station Camp Creek Access. Just because the developer has a lease from the ACOE to construct a massive dock project does not mean you, as a council, have no control. If you grant the developer one approval beyond what is currently acceptable by code, you must require the developer to make changes to the dock plan if they wish to approve a single variance. Reject allowing 253 docks and limit the project as follows: less than 100 docks now and in the future; no docks attached to the current dock launch area; require construction of the launch ramp from the developer's property. This plan and associated traffic to the only launch ramp proposed existing will be the worst decision you can make. If you do not require the developer to install a separate ramp for 100 docks, yes, that should be the max, staff and developers continue to rush this project along without careful consideration of impact. Let me provide an example. Please read your own traffic study approved by your engineers. For Foxland and Douglas Bend intersections, and I quote, "Roundabout design was studied for this intersection. However, due to right-of-way constraints and probable utility conflicts, a roundabout is not recommended at this intersection. All way stop control is recommended at this intersection." Close quotes. Then the report states, "It's recommended that as part of the development, the access of the existing boat ramp be reconstructed to restrict turning movements to right-in, right-out, left-out only. This should be accomplished by reconstructing the median on Douglas Bend and adding signage along Douglas Bend Road to assist with the process turning movements." Whew. The median should take special care to obstruct the gas station access. Full construction documents should be provided to staff for review and approval prior to construction. Then again, Figure 8 provides a conceptual layout of improvements. If the recommendations above are constructed, vehicles coming from Nashville Pike will be able to access the existing boat ramp access by utilizing turnaround, U-turn, once the roundabout is constructed." Laugh as I read this traffic report. The council shall require that all condos and commercial buildings approved not to exceed 35-foot height requirement for the underlying zoning. Please do not cherry pick in prior approvals for the 35 feet unless applicant is willing to build what was approved at the time without any changes. Legally, in my humble opinion, you're on very shaky legal grounds here to grant such an approval. Once you rein in this overdevelopment proposal, as you should, there will be no need for parking spaces as proposed to the entry to the neighborhood and can be saved from destruction to build a Walmart-type parking lot in our entry.
Thank you, Mr. Shulte. Anyone else wishing to speak, now would be your opportunity. You need to come to the podium if you should like to speak. And if there's someone that wants to speak after this gentleman, you are welcome to come on forward.
My name is Greg Ziles, and this was actually written by my wife, Barbara Ziles, who felt more comfortable having me present for her. And that's a good thing, because she is really, really upset about this whole project. She's very concerned with the proposed public commercial marina and the good old development being considered in Foxland Harbor, which is, as been noted before, a private residential luxury community within Gallatin. There's several serious concerns that have been stated before, but I'll reiterate them. One, traffic at the corner of Douglas Bend and Nashville Pike, as well as the entrance area to Foxland Community, is already a dangerous mixture of pedestrians, anxious speeding drivers, heavy trucks, motorcycles, and bicycles, since Gallatin put in nice bike lanes and people get congested down in that area. Adding additional traffic will result in increased vehicle accidents, including pedestrians, with a likely increase in fatalities. This will definitely impact response times for emergency vehicles and police for residents of Foxland and residents off of Douglas Boulevard. My wife is an emergency room nurse. She's seen the effects of pedestrian deaths and accidents at marina locations. Two, safety is a major concern. For a proposed public boat club, 200-plus proposed boat slips, a public fuel station, and a public children's playground. I'm not sure what the size of that is. It's probably fairly small. But seriously, what kind of security will be provided by the developer or Gallatin PD to oversee each of these areas individually? Also, access to these areas poses a hazard to the entrance of a private residential community with increased traffic and the introduction of more golf carts, bikes, and pedestrian congestion at risk. Take a look in the neighborhood sometime and see how many little kids are riding on the back of golf carts or driving the golf carts themselves. The environmental contamination is a major concern with the certain destruction of natural habitat on Hickory Lake. The recent new proposed oversized Marina public destination complex will contribute to fuel spills, litter, erosion, electricity leakage, accidents, a real increase in rodent populations, and a lot of feces, dog poop, maybe a few cats, too, from visiting pets of boaters and visitors. This is a fact in a marina. There will be issues with trash maintenance and refuse pickup from all the other public facilities proposed and located at the entrance of a private residential community. This is insanity. I have a number of pictures taken of marinas around Tennessee. Take a look at the storage facilities. Take a look at the boat facilities after a period of time. The fourth consideration is the aesthetic denigration, which is a major concern with any alteration of the current entrance to Foxland, including the stone arches, lighting, security camera, and mature greenery. The entrance to Foxland needs to be saved from destruction. Please mandate Foxland's neighborhood entrance that it remain unchanged. The last consideration we've already addressed, I guess, is party and a vacation destination. That's the implication of the proposal. The condominium, hotel rooms, or commercial day spa and restaurants are not appropriate to be located at the entrance into a private residential community. You need to mandate no commercial facilities nor any short-term rentals at the residence. It's interesting to note that the 2020 census of Gallatin is 44,000, a little off of the 50,000 that was in the proposal. The median family income in Gallatin is $41,899. The median household income in Foxland Harbor Lakeview is $843,973. I wonder who this project is really going to benefit. 250 slips is overkill. Who's the beneficiary? Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Leigh Ellen Siders. I live at 1108 Lachlan Drive in Gallatin. First of all, thank y'all for taking the time to listen to all us lowly citizens. But I have a different approach. I'm not going to quote a lot of facts, because I don't have privy to all of the facts. But I would like to share this. I have been in Gallatin longer than Old Hickory Lake has been in existence, longer than Old Hickory Dam has been in existence. And I remember when the lake first, I don't want to say opened, or was open to boat traffic. And it was no big thing. People around here weren't dying to have lake property and be out on the lake all the time. There were, yes, there was boat traffic, but not like what it is today. When we were in high school, and Connie, you can appreciate this, we used to spend our summer afternoons jumping off of Walmsley Bluff, and we never had to worry about all the boat traffic. A group of us high school girls even went skinny dipping off of Douglas Bend without a worry about who was around there.
Connie?
But the point is, our lake used to be a calming, serene experience, and that no longer exists. If any of you have been out on the lake and been to places like Skinny Dip, there's hundreds of boats. And this past weekend even, they had three lake police out there because they knew there was going to be problem. The more boats we put out there, the more problems we're going to have. I mean, that just stands to reason. It doesn't take a genius to figure that out. But there was even an incident of an adult pulling two kids on a tube with a jet ski, and he was around the next bend before he even knew his kids were gone. I think there's a safety concern in addition to the environmental questions that have already been raised. You know, I think, as far as I'm concerned, Old Hickory Lake has gone from a pleasant boating experience to a financial monster. And that's what this is all about. It's about money, and money talks. And we all know that. I'm not opposed to having a new marina. I know Gallatin is growing. It is not the hometown I grew up in. I don't think this is the proper place. Go down or upriver some. I think Cherokee's the last marina until you get to Hartsfall. You know, why can't it be somewhere else? Why does it have to be right there? But other than a trip down memory lane, I would like to say this to each and every Listen, please, listen to your constituents. Don't be like an alderman in Hendersonville told me one time, "Well, I know more what's better for the citizens than they do." You're elected by your constituents. Listen, really listen to your constituents. That's what you're here for. You're not here for developers. You're not here to represent what the Corps has already approved. You are here for one reason and one reason only, and that's to listen to what your constituents have to say. And if you have a differing opinion from that, that's fine. Talk to them. See where they're coming from. Try to put yourself in their place. I think it's just going to be a nightmare. We used to watch ski jumping across the road from where this marina is proposed. It's so full of silt now, you probably couldn't put a John boat out there. This area, I'm sure, is not deep enough for a lot of the boats that will come there. And I think the silt problem will be a continuing problem. It's not going to be something you come in there and dredge one time, and it'll be fine. It's not, that's not going to happen. So I will close again in saying, just please, I don't live in the city, so I don't get to vote for any of you, so you don't have to listen to me at all, but I do live on the lake. We have a boat dock. You know, we're going to be fine. This isn't about us. This is about another group of people. But please, listen to them. If you have to call a meeting or send out emails to your constituents, say, "I will talk to you." Let's get together. Thank you very much.
Chris Taylor. I represent an economic development nonprofit here in town called Ford Sumner. And I've sat in your seat for eight years previously, and on a planning commission and the county commission, so I empathize with the hard decision that you have. One of the things I'd like to share with you that kind of made it a little easier for me was I always just dealt with the facts. So along those same lines, I've kind of looked into some of the things here, and I've been to several of these meetings, and I've heard a lot of different things said. And so I was just curious, and I went to planning here in Gallatin, and I just said, "Hey, what was the original zoning for this, say, 15 years ago? It was 300 slips, and it was 260 or 280 units." So quite a bit more than what it's asked for today. I thought, okay. So that gave me the perspective of the fact that this has been a plan for at least 15 years on a larger scale than what's being presented today. Then I kind of went to the backside and said, "Listen to what everybody says. Is there a benefit to the local area? How does it help?" And so one of the things we first looked at was just some economic numbers. If you have a new restaurant, high-end, you've got a marina, you're very conservative, probably 35 to 50 jobs. It's going to generate right around 400, 450,000 in tax for Gallatin a year. So there's some benefit right there financially, and then also the fact in job creation. Then we started looking, I looked a little more, and I did listen, and I've been out there several times, and I don't disagree. It's pretty cluttered out there. It's hard for walkability. It's hard to get around on a golf cart. It's hard to do things safely. Regrettably, I don't see any plans in the city, though, to fix any of that. So the way we fix that is we have a development come in, and then that development attacks the infrastructure in that area to make it better. And from what I've seen, that's what's happening here. You're going to have additional green space that's going to connect everything, which includes walkability, bicycles. You're going to have a playground. So it's the things that you expect to have with a development, but this one also fixes what are some of the issues that people have been saying tonight and for the past couple weeks. Then you start looking a little bit more, okay, what other amenities are there? Because that's great that it's going to fix some of the infrastructure issues. It's going to bring in money, which is always great, especially on bad budget years. But how does it continue to help? And so one of the things I looked at is, okay, how is it for Gallatin? One of the things that Gallatin, Sumner County, Hendersonville, everybody, we've all talked about is, hey, how do we recruit a corporate headquarters here? That's what everybody seems to want at some time or another, because it brings in a really great property tax, sales tax, but also it helps kind of center your city to a degree and creates a really great anchor. One of the things we've always been delinquent in is something that would attract a corporate headquarters. We have some residential neighborhoods, much like they spoke about the affluence of this one. But if you have a marina along with a golf course and then another golf course pretty close, what you've done is you've tied in something that the rest of the state really doesn't have. It might be one or two places outside, but it's not, it's more rural. Like, you know, you might look at Cedar Creek, some different places where they have something like that. So you're going to have an anchor here that is going to attract. And when we go, when we go and shop, Gallatin, and I'm not saying for, you know, manufacturing that's pulling in, you know, 20, $20-an-hour jobs. I'm saying for corporate headquarters, that's going to bring a couple million in. When we're looking for that, this is the kind of thing we can sell to them. This is the kind of thing we say, "Look at this. This is what represents Gallatin. It's a showpiece, and it's important." But again, it's another amenity. It's another benefit to the city. And finally, I kind of looked at just in general, and I said, just from what do we hear? What I heard for eight years, what I've seen, when y'all did your study, when you did the rezoning, when you did everything else, was there was a really strong emphasis on greenways. There was a strong emphasis on connectivity. There's a strong emphasis on walking, being able to bicycle to different areas. Again, this takes care of that and brings in, and I think it's important to note that there is a restaurant right outside of this community. It's in their clubhouse. This allows a restaurant that the rest of the community can also use. And I don't care what you say, we're never going to go wrong having more high-end restaurants in our county, because it's one way to keep the money that people go spend in Nashville, in Gallatin, and in Sumner County. Again, it's a tough decision, because there's a lot of charge to motion. And for that, I'm very sympathetic to y'all, because I've been there. But I just ask you to please look at the facts. It was zoned this way forever, and clearly by previous councils, it was approved. It is a huge financial benefit to the city, and the job creation, the taxes, and then the eventual anchor, and how we can try and recruit something that we've been wanting for a long time. And then more importantly than anything else, it's going to improve that area. Much as the citizens and people, the infrastructure's going to get fixed. The walkability's going to be fixed. The connectivity's going to get fixed, and you're going to have it done in a way that's beautiful. And the best part is you can say, "Hey, we want this many trees. We want this," and they're going to do it. And I think that's a great way to be. It's always good for y'all to have the point of leverage to be able to give to me. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Let me interrupt one minute. She just told me that a lot of people are not giving their addresses, so please be sure to do that, along with your name. Thank you all.
My name is Marita Katzbeck. I'm at 1692 Foxland Boulevard in Foxland Harbor. I've been a resident there for nearly five years, and it's a wonderful community. What I am concerned about greatly is how much more density the peninsula is going to have, looking at all the building that is going along just right, just barely south of Nashville Pike on Douglas Bend, with the apartments, the Bexley Complex, where the apartments are literally right on top of the road, and there's absolutely no way to expand that road any more than it can go. I'm sure that Mr. Leon, whoever, who developed, who had this dream of having this marina, how many years ago now? 25, maybe 30 years? But there wasn't all this growth. Tennessee is a great state. People are moving here like crazy, and I see a lot of empty land, like farmland, just down the road from there. And I have a feeling that people are going to be selling their property and building. There's going to be more and more homes. There's going to be so much more congestion. How are we going to manage that area? How are we going to manage Douglas Bend? How can we get out of our two little streets when there's so much traffic now, and then there's going to be even more in the future? I would hope that you are more forward-thinking with our community, with the infrastructure. Look at all the building that is happening across from Lowe's, that's behind Kennesaw, along Greenlee, on Lock 4, 109. There's so much growth here, and that's kind of cool. But you know what? When it comes to infrastructure, I think there needs to be a lot more planning, smarter planning. What's going to happen? And especially on Douglas Bend, when there's, where there's, and even Cages Bend, there's not much room to expand those lanes. It's hard enough getting out of the parking lot at Kroger. So I would, I really wish you would consider either doing away with this marina. I have a feeling that's not going to happen, but making it smaller, because this small little area cannot withstand this, and there's only going to be more growth. Wouldn't you all agree that, you know, that there's going to be more growth? So I would really hope that you would reconsider the size of this project that has expanded. And according to this former gentleman, he said it was big, now it's small, and then it was big, and, you know, I really don't know. But I really feel that the future of the infrastructure should seriously be considered and looked at and planned upon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening again, council. I'm Tim Weeks. I'm from Hermitage, Tennessee, but I have a lot of friends that live in this area on both sides of the lake, and I've been aware of this for quite some time. I originally spoke.
Can we get your address, too, please?
6101 Hager's Grove Pass in Hermitage, 37076. I originally spoke about this issue on behalf of the Sierra Club at the hearing, the public hearing that the Corps of Engineers held, and we had a lot of concern about the water quality and what this project may do to it. The science is still out on that. The jury's still out on it. We just know that there's going to probably be more dredging than what they originally estimated to build something the size in a very shallow area. So you're going to have a lot of muck stirred up. So I hope there's not any regret down the road in terms of how a marina of this size is built, also to accommodate the size of boats that they've talked about. We're not talking about little fishing boats. We're talking about yachts, big boats. It's going to stir up a lot more silt. So the marina may be known as So the marina may be known as a mud hole for quite some time. So I hope you'll keep that in mind in terms of the size of the project. Another issue, what I hear from neighbors is that the density of this project, that you're trying, you're trying to shoehorn something fairly large into a residential area that's pre-existed this development. And I think that's the problem. So whether it's a marina or a giant Walmart or a movie theater or multiple restaurants, anything commercial that's going on this particular corner of the lake is very difficult. Access to it is difficult. The traffic and density are all going to be a problem and is something you've got to decide and manage. I'm hoping you'll either downsize this or disapprove it. Also the process, we wouldn't be here had it not been for a really strange vote at the planning commission. I was there and I watched and the vote was very finagled. I really don't think they wanted to support it. But they've given it to you as a hot potato to decide and it's coming close to a decision. Last is, I've mentioned this when I was here before, unless you really clamp down and restrict short-term rentals, they've downsized the condominiums, but if you don't have further restrictions, you know, having condos and a marina, it sounds like a wonderful idea. You've got a restaurant, you've got boats, all the pictures they put into their package of how they present it shows families. But I guarantee you, this is going to be a magnet for the party crowd. Because you're going to have condos and boats and a bar and a restaurant all right there and folks are going to be of the wrong stripe, are going to be attracted to it, to rent it out for the weekend. There's going to be liquor on the boats, there's going to be liquor in the condos and all that's a combination that's going to lead to trouble, crime, calls to the police and fire. It's going to be a major headache if you don't do this preemptively. I know that in Nashville, their Pennington Bend and properties that are up around the Cumberland River, they're residential areas, but they built these party houses, Airbnb rented out, and it was a nightmare for the people who lived there, a frickin' nightmare because of the parties that were being done and the shootings and the drugs and the stuff that went on. So don't take Nashville's problems and bring them to Gallatin. I hope you're wiser than that and you see the potential problems that may happen. So last but not least, and like I said, I know folks that live on both sides of the lake, you guys have a wonderful town, people love living up here, you've got some really wonderful neighborhoods on the lake. You know, if I'd bought, spent a lot of money and invested in the American dream on the lake here in Gallatin, I wouldn't be very happy if this was being built next door to me either because it changes everything. So yes, you can have economic development, you can have progress, but you can also do it at the cost of losing a lot of friends of your constituents, of people who voted for you to put you in office. So thank you for your time and I hope you will decide wisely on this issue.
Ampharino two oh two Wood Lake Drive. Voice is really bad today, been out of too many fires at night. Real quick, I just want to bring up something, I was not planning on speaking tonight, but one of the previous speakers kept saying, high-end restaurant. And I knew that that's what I keep hearing too. However, on page eighty of tonight's agenda, it basically says, high turnover, sit-down restaurant. And to be clear, a sit-down, high turnover restaurant is a sit-down restaurant, generally the family is out of there in an hour or under. So I'd say a Logan's Roadhouse, a Charlie O's. So if you call of those places high-end, I guess I have different standards. I was hoping more of a bourbon steak, I was hoping more of a whole shop house. But no, I mean, we have plenty of chain restaurants that we can get in and out of in under an hour. So again, it's not a high-end restaurant, it's called a high turnover restaurant, which is not a high-end restaurant. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us speak. My name is Robert Shalas. I live on twelve thirty-one Orton Circle at Gallatin. I'm going to bring up something that I brought up with the planning commission, has to do with the current boat ramp. One of the things I talked about earlier was that boat ramp, on weekends, there's no place to park and it's full. And those are the people, the middle-class people, that are going to get shoved out of this thing. And the reason why I say that is in the last meeting we had, they said, well, we've got four, code says we need four hundred and thirty-five parking spots. We got four nineteen. That includes the thirty-three parking spots on the ramp. So that leaves you fifty-nine parking spots short, but we're going to give you forty golf carts and forty-four bicycle parking. Not going to happen. If you look at this map here, you've got, I don't know how many docks here, forty, whatever, piers coming off that boat ramp. Where do you think those people are going to park? Way over here? No, they're going to park right there. The poor guy, the poor working man, the fisherman that wants to go fishing, he's not going to stand a chance. And that's all I got to say. I'm back on that same old thing. That poor guy that makes forty-some thousand dollars a year, whatever they quoted, he's going to get the short end of the stick. And the people with the money, and that's what this is about, we heard that one guy speak about the money. It's money, money, money. I do thank you. Have a good one.
Good evening. Jake Barr, eight thirty-one Plantation Boulevard, Fairview Plantation resident. Actually, tonight, I'm not for or against the project. I want you to forget about the red shirt I've got on. Actually, I want you to just think for a second and say, hmm, Gallatin's growing. Been for twenty-five plus years, especially escalating, booming for the last thirteen and a half that I've lived here. That's great. Context. Context is everything, folks. Context. Each individual decision you're making as a council has to be taken in context with all the other surrounding data. Context. We've had a problem at the traffic stop at Douglas Bend and Thirty-One for all thirteen years I've lived in this community. Done nothing about it. Quite frankly, I want to applaud the council, we put in sequenced lights going down Thirty-One to try and deal with the traffic flow. Context. All we've done is queued even further the backup from the developments all the way down Douglas Bend. So on any given afternoon or morning, we typically have between fifteen to twenty cars queued to try and do the Indy five hundred to get through the light before it turns. Okay? Context, guys. Context of independent decisions that we're making. Context. I built a factory in the middle of London, England, the biggest laundry de-factory in the entire continent for Europe. It was built between two residential neighborhoods, zoned properly, approved, et cetera. Context. Ten years later, that factory needs to double production. I want you to think about it. If we approve things as is, does the rest of the development down Douglas Bend stop? Does the rest of the development along Nashville Pike stop? It doesn't. So we have to look and say, let's put our thinking hats on and understand if I lean into this decision, what do I have to do to counteract the additional growth? I would submit to you right now, if you don't go double up on the lanes going off of Douglas Bend onto Nashville Pike, we'll never be able to do it. Why? Because now we've taken all the adjacent property, all the ability to expand, so either put the convenience store and the gas station out of business on the left-hand side so that you can actually add and address the traffic problem that you already have before we add to it. Context. I'm asking you to step back and do the due diligence of understanding you're not just making a decision on the number of units you can have in this development. Thank you.
There's anyone else that wishes to speak? You need to be at the podium, please.
Sorry to be tardy, mayor. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Tom Lee. I'm a partner in the law firm of Nelson, Mullins, Riley and Scarborough in Nashville. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Old Hickory Lake. I want to just focus the council's attention on a couple of things tonight, as this is a work session, so that you have the opportunity to think about these things before the votes come. First, some have asked, why is this before us now in this way? And second, why is this coming now? This feels as though there's pressure on me, it feels as though it's coming too quickly, I don't understand why, 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 we're rushing like we are. Why was it so necessary to engage in that vote, the planning commission? If you haven't watched that tape, listen to that tape, you should. You should. Well, I want to tell you a little bit about the history of this project and it is in your agenda tonight, as the planning commission staff always provides it. And it's something about the history of this development. Forward Sumner and Mr. Taylor do incredible work, but there was not a marina approved here at this project, at this site fifteen years ago. The first time a marina was approved here, according to your planning commission staff, was June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, in a plan that has never been built. And that's a fair question, I think you should ask it. I think you should take Bobby Reed at his word. Mr. Reed has appeared before this body in the planning commission, he is a consultant for the project. Mr. Reed told you last time he was here. It's a seasonal business. It runs from Memorial Day to Labor Day. It's a seasonal business. You can drive around to the other marinas in the area and you can see what he means by that. It's a seasonal business. Kids are in school. I drove by Cherokee Marina the other day, just this week, slips are empty. It's a seasonal business. It's like having a minor league baseball park, you think it's great, but a minor league baseball park is empty two hundred ninety days a year. No one's going to build a restaurant much on two hundred ninety empty days a year. That's a marina. Mr. Reed has told you. June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three is an important date, so also is August twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. That is when the planning commission approved the final master development plan alteration for Foxland Harbor Phase Point One, Phase Two Point One, Reverie Waterside, those are the condominiums. You've been told the condominiums have been approved, that we're not really talking about the condominiums. But the city's zoning code says the following. With respect to a final master development plan, if within three years after the date of planning commission approval, work has not been performed pursuant to a validly issued building permit, the approval of a final master development plan shall become void. That's in about ten days. The approval of those condominiums becomes void. So I say that to say, the condominiums are before you. The marina is before you too, because that preliminary master development plan approval in two thousand twenty-three expires next year. And that means construction has to be underway pursuant to a building permit, that means your process must be completed, that means the codes department must have a building permit in about fourteen months. This is why you're seeing it now. This is why you're seeing it now. Not because the market has changed, not because there's an opportunity that wasn't there before, but because nothing's happened for two years. And now we've got to keep this approval fresh. It's not by itself disqualifying, but you should ask yourself, has the market shifted such that we will impose upon the one entrance to a subdivision in the city for adult swings? That's the presentation you're going to see in just a little bit. You're going to see a presentation from the developer, it's very nice, and it promises cornhole and adult swings and nature trails and coffee shop and an ice cream shop. And yes, there's a restaurant with those neon signs right on the side that they keep telling you they're not going to build. Why is this project here before you right now? I would submit to you, it's not because of anything in Gallatin that has changed, it is because their time, like mine, is up.
That is good.
If you need more time, I'm willing to yield my five minutes to you, sir.
It's all yours.
I'm concerned on a number of levels.
Feed your name and address, please.
My name is Lois Strong and I live in Foxland Harbor. I am concerned about how easily it is to get a zoning variance. Reverie was approved for additional height. Before you is the variance for the new condos for a variance in height. I have attended several meetings and variances seem to be very easily approved. The people that have spoken before have expressed concerns for growth. Henderson today, Sandersonville today, put a moratorium on all building. I would hope that Gallatin, with the growth that we have experienced, would consider the same. That growth stop until infrastructure has been supported and approved, I would hope that city council would consider the objections of so many of us, even though I've been here since nineteen, which makes me a newcomer. In a lot of ways, we have lived in various states over my husband's career and I see all kinds of warning signs about the growth and lack of structure here in Gallatin.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Evening, mayor, council. My name is John Gardner, eleven forty-five McCroy Circle here in Gallatin. I'd just like to start with, you know, I would strongly request that any deviations to height above the standard requirement of thirty-five feet be rejected. And I say that based upon having had the Reverie Point put in, having had experience with my first dock, which was installed by Bobby Reed in two thousand, end of two thousand and fourteen, that we ran perfectly until December of twenty-three. So that dock was destroyed in December of twenty-three. We finally got a second dock put in. Finally got put in in July of two thousand twenty-four. And in April fifth of two thousand twenty-five this year, that dock was destroyed as well. Now I find it interesting that, you know, we run for effectively an eight-year period with no issues of any kind, surrounding docks, no issues of any kind. And now since Reverie Point has gone in, we've had two docks destroyed. And oh, by the way, I've lost two boats. So you take that and you say, is it consequence? Maybe not. Is in fact Reverie Point and buildings of that height perched on a bluff, amplifying the winds, which already get amplified as they move from land onto the shore, typically by the amount of ten to fifteen feet, or ten to fifteen miles per hour? And if we add more high-rise buildings... And if we add more high-rise buildings, do I end up with, you know, a third dock destroyed? I ask you to reject any requests for 35-foot, higher-than-35-foot buildings on this site. You know, secondly, we've heard the developer's own consultant, Mr. Reed, repeatedly say there's no dredging required. I would like to see it put in writing that there will be and shall not be any dredging of any form associated with any docks built on this site. There was a terrible environmental assessment done. There had been a request for a full-blown deep environmental assessment plan and review to be done. That was rejected. I think that what you're going to find is that docks can't be put in here without some very significant dredging and implications of that dredging on the wildlife and on your residents who are just downstream of that. I would like to see in writing as a constituent that there is no short-term rentals allowed in these condos. I don't want a party across the lake from my house. This weekend, it was interesting to watch two wakeboats, which the state law is 200 feet away from the shoreline or any dock, and to watch two wakeboats almost crash into the dock, or into, not to the dock, but into the shoreline itself. One of which actually hit it, actually grounded himself to a point that they had to get out and push it off. That's the kind of safety issues we already have, and you're talking about adding 253 more docks. Two council meetings ago, I brought in the original sales brochure by Leon Moore for Fairview Plantation and for Foxland, and it clearly showed a community dock in the range of 60 to 80 slips maximum on that site. No gas slips, no convenience store. That was the original master plan of these communities. I'm not sure how, you know, as an investor, you know, Gallatin, I thought it was an ideal spot when I purchased property here in 2008. Today, I would say I question whether I should invest in Gallatin anymore. And the reason is, is that how can a master planned community that one sees and is sold on and is told, hey, this is recreation and residential, now go to commercial? I find that very, very deplorable. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, okay. Mr. Zinser?
Michael Zinser, 914 Farrington Way, Gallatin, Tennessee, 48-year resident of Gallatin. I'll be brief. Are we the citizens of Gallatin mere subjects to be ruled by an elite group of elected officials and developers? Or are we free and independent citizens who have the right to consent and be governed by our elected officials according to the will of the people? The will of the people is that this project should be scrapped. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Tierney and live at 1709 Andy Jackson Trail, Gallatin. Been in the Sumner County area for approximately 28 years, and I've seen a whole lot of growth in this area that everybody has seen. The quote that was made about 15 years ago, there was something approved for the site of Douglas Bend, seems that there was a time when there was at least, I would say, conservatively speaking, 15,000 fewer people at that time. If you look at the condition, if anybody's traveled on Nashville Pike here lately, you can see the condition of the roads. If you come into a development now that's coming around 17 acres around Cages Bend area, you can see the prospects. That intersection is already a nightmare in terms, especially around rush hour, where it takes two or three lights sometimes to get through if you want to go anywhere. And the prospect of that kind of a problem at Douglas Bend, where you have, both of them are kind of parallel, Cages Bend and Douglas Bend, they have two lanes, one on each side, and that's not a lot of room for traffic to be going down. So there may be some money in it, but the quality of life is at stake. Back in 2017, there was an article, unfortunately, I guess one might say, in Reader's Digest that said, oh, Gallatin is the number one place to come in the country. It's a peaceful place. People are, it's a small-town community feel and all this. Well, we've certainly veered from that immensely here of late. Buildings going up everywhere, the quality of life is going down. And so I beseech you and the Lord to help guide you to reject this project because it's going to be a nightmare for the people who live in and around there. The quote that was made about accidents being more likely is certainly a real quote. There's a recent death of a neighbor's friend who was driving a motorcycle up from Gordon Crossing there that got killed from the traffic. It's kind of getting to be a real nightmare, and so I hope you consider the regular folks in and around Cages Bend. There's only a couple ways out, either Cages Bend, if you're in there, or Douglas Bend, and it'll be a nightmare. And we appreciate your consideration for the quality of life aspect and not just money. Thank you.
Sir?
I know I've sent multiple emails with information from environmental issues. I hope you guys got them. Some of you responded. The ones that happened to respond to me positively or negatively, I do appreciate, at least I know you got them. I've sent several, but the last one I sent, I was just going to kind of mention a couple of things that I've heard tonight. But I know, I look at the Foxland Harbor Marina PowerPoint. It still has slides on it. It shows condominiums described as residences. They're designed to be short-term rentals. They're over height. It's been talked about now for at least four to five meetings. It's obvious the plans to claim exceptions for height based on non-adjacent properties for the current condo plan, and then attach them to the marina multi-purpose buildings so they can try to justify those height exceptions. You know, the mayor had asked for renderings, for height evaluations for the area. Y'all may have them. I haven't seen anything like that. All I did was just look at what's online right there. They're just pictures of the current condo buildings. Doesn't make any difference. You really shouldn't be making decisions off renderings anyway. I can draw pretty, pretty things on napkins and that type of thing. You know, these slides lean on the sales pitch. It's been 70 years since the last Gallatin Marina. What difference does it make, whether it's 70 years or 100 years? That has nothing to do with resolving the issues of trying to put something in. I think, I truly believe the developer has an opportunity and has the right to try to make a profit off their piece of property, but they've oversized it. They've got it way out of whack, way, way too large for what the people in the neighborhood intended or needed, or what even needed in the area. You'll see another slide. They say it's transit-friendly. It's a unique slide. It's going to be a slide they're going to use to ask for parking exceptions. Instead of cars, they're going to park golf carts. You know, it paints a picture of being a neighborhood friendly, but the truth is, you know, it's adjacent. They claim they're not part of the neighborhood. They're separate. They don't have to follow neighborhood guidelines, but then they want to be neighborhood friendly. You know, it's just a spin. It's a putting a commercial entity into a private residential neighborhood. I hear talk about golf carts. I bet there's not 20 street legal golf carts in Foxland Harbor. So I don't know where all these golf carts are going to come and park there. You can't, you've got to be street legal unless they're just going to ask for an exception to not, to ignore the state laws on rain golf carts on the land. I don't know. I just don't, how you can use a transit-friendly slide when everyone acknowledges that's going to be major traffic impacts on Douglas Bend and Gallatin Road. And you'll probably see a slide tonight, which it's on their website. It's my favorite slide. It's the one that shows the Foxland Marina Seafood in big neon lighting. That's been mentioned twice in two meetings. Still there. I don't know, I guess eventually going to ask for an exception for the neon lighting sign as well. So I don't know what's going on with that. And then the parking, the development guy, he's talking about 50 employees at a restaurant. Everybody's got to realize, you've got to have parking for all the employees at this complex here. You've got to have parking for all the condominiums. They're going to be asking for exceptions for parking left and right. It's just not going to work. Hold your line on what codes call for on building heights and parking, and I guarantee you this project will right-size itself real fast. Thank you.
Sir? Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, public recognition is now closed. Moving now to Mayor's comments. I have gotten a report in the last few minutes that the pep rally on the square has gone very, very well tonight, and apparently a lot of happy kids and families down there. So that's super cool, and my thanks to the chamber for doing that. My apologies to all of you. It was not the best collision of crowds, I'm certain. So I apologize that you probably had some parking challenges, and I'm glad you made it here. Some things coming up that I want you to be aware of. On the 14th is the United Way of Sumner County's Community Impact Breakfast at Our Lady of the Lake Catholic Church in Hendersonville. That's at 7:30. If you'd like to attend, contact the United Way. Silver Sneakers Luncheon at the Civic Center happens on the 14th at lunchtime. Gallatin Outdoor Flower Market is every Thursday night, 5 to 8. This is a really big deal, and I would ask that you pass it on to people who may be able to benefit from this. Is the Free Dental Day at Northfield. It's from 7:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the church. This is part of their ministry, and they bring in many, many, many dentists from all over the area and some from out of the area, excuse me, that provide free dental care for people in need, and it's a really amazing ministry to see in action. I know that they have a lot of volunteers supporting people, but if you know someone who needs dental care, please pass this opportunity along. Also on the 16th, the Lug Nuts Tribute Album Release Party is happening at Historic Stonewall. I have heard that is sold out, but that's still very, very exciting. Thursday next week, featuring Cannon Cox, happening at 6:30. I'm sorry. And then Good Morning Gallatin with Scott Langford of Sumner County Schools will be on that Friday morning. One other thing, on the 13th, from 12 until 3, this is September 13th, from 12 until 3, at the Civic Center, they are doing a fundraiser to support the young man who was injured in the fire explosion in Nexus Development, and that's from 12 until 3, a benefit for Hunter Prior. So I'd pass those things along to you, and with that, I'm going to move on to the regular agenda. The first item is ordinance 02507-40. It's an ordinance to the city of Gallatin approving the amended preliminary master development plan for Foxland Harbor Marina on 7.38 acres located south of Nashville Pike, east of Douglas Bend, authorizing the revision be indicated on the official zoning outlets repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Rose, our city planner.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'll just kind of run through the PowerPoint slides here that we've got on this. I know we discussed it in fairly a good amount of detail at the last council committee meeting, but I do want to just kind of recap on what we previously discussed. So, pardon me. This is the property area, as I'm sure we're all familiar. It's right there at the corner of Nashville Pike and Douglas Bend Road. As we look at what current approved plans we have, and this has been mentioned by some of the public comments as well, you've got the Foxland Harbor Marina Plan, which was approved in June of 2023. That approved for 260 marina slips, the 3,600-square-foot marina shop and some fuel pumps. Then you have the Reverie Waterside at Foxland Harbor Phase 2.1, which is approved in August of 2022. That approved for 64 condo units, 4,000 square feet of office space, and a maximum height of 87 feet. This is your approved Foxland Harbor Marina Plan. Basically, that included this area here, but did not include the portion that's kind of outside this line right here, which you'll see in the future plan, or in the current plan, that now that does include that. Of course, it also included the slips up here out in the water. These are the architecture images that are planned for the marina structures, those associated essentially with that portion of the project that would be built under the Corps of Engineers This is your Reverie Waterside project plan, which again was approved in August 2022. These four buildings here are essentially the same four buildings that are proposed in your current plan that's on the agenda for tonight. It includes 64 units of condo living with parking underneath and, you know, also parking out in front along the edge of Douglas Bend there, or I'm sorry, Fox and Boulevard. This is the elevations for that, and basically that, these drawings are very, very similar, if not, I'm not sure if it's identical, but very close to what was already done for the previously done Reverie condos that are in existence today. We did do a measurement for the height, and as we discussed last time, the midpoint is where your regulation is for our zoning ordinance for height, and the request matches that midpoint, is that 78 feet. So it's less than the 87 feet, but I think they were originally looking at the top of the building, and that's why they were asking for the 87 feet. So what went to the Planning Commission was the request for 250 marina slips, which was already approved by the Corps of Engineers, and then also 13,870 square feet of retail, which is more retail and/or office space than what had previously been approved by about 10,000 square feet, maybe. But also then the 3,500-square-foot restaurant, and then additional condo units to the tune of 48 units additionally in the two mixed-use buildings, with the 48 units in those two buildings and the six- With the 48 units in those two buildings and the 64 units in the other four condo buildings, you have 112 total condo units. The max height of 75 feet for mixed use was what was shown on their plan. Again, that was discussed at the past work council committee meeting, and we've now kind of arrived that they are needing 78 feet, but that request is obviously less than the 87 that was previously what they were asking for. This is the current plan. It shows again all your slips, it shows your four condo buildings here, and it shows, which again were previously already approved, and then your two mixed-use buildings, which are right here, all your parking that supports it out here, and then your additional parking and stuff that are on the, on the existing boat ramp, and then your, your green space that is in between the two that follows along the old Douglas Bend Road alignment. This is just an aerial of the, of the land and a landscape plan. This does show kind of a concept for the sign out in front of the Marina. These are your architectural images of the condos, and your architecture for the proposed mixed-use buildings with the common space in between. Now, we did get some images from the developer, and I'll just kind of run through these really quickly. I'm sure they may want to also highlight some of this. This is just their master plan overlaid onto some, the green space. Then there are some traffic intersection conditions. These just kind of highlight the different intersections, and I'm sure Nick will be speaking to this briefly after me as well. But they give some options for the different types of treatments that would occur at these intersections. This one is for a restriction for left turn-in movements from Douglas Bend into the existing boat ramp parking lot. This one is for the entrance from Douglas Bend onto, into the Marina parking area. This one is for the intersection at Douglas Bend and Foxland, proposed as a four-way stop, which is what the traffic impact analysis recommended, although it also mentioned a possible roundabout, which Nick will speak to more here. And then finally, the other driveway entrance off of Foxland Boulevard into the parking lot. Parking has been looked at, and they are proposing to, in order to be able to meet the requirement, instead of having to rely on additional golf cart or bicycle parking and things like that, they have highlighted an area a little farther away, which is behind the clubhouse and is still undeveloped, to create 39 spaces here, which will offset some existing parking that will be pulled over essentially from the clubhouse on the other side and attached to the Marina project. So that's 39 spaces that helps them get up to 458 provided parking spots, whereas 455 are required according to the zoning regulations. These are some images as to what the entrance would look like, so they have rendered essentially what the retaining wall would look like, and then, you know, the view of the buildings behind. Of course, this would be with fully mature trees, so you will see some, some of the structure in the interim before the trees grow. This is just a massing image of, you've got the four existing condo buildings, this is from across the river, or the lake. This would be the proposed additional buildings on this side, and just kind of seeing that it matches the height typical from what was already approved on, on the other side. Some contact information for their project. So just to summarize, maximum height for all the buildings, we are recommending that they shall be at 78 feet, measured from the point of average height of the roof, having a pitch included, including a gable or hipped roof. They did add the 39 additional parking spaces for the Foxland complex to the east of the existing event space, parking for the country club. And then, again, I'm going to let Nick speak to the changes for site on the Douglas Bend Road and access, and so on and so forth. I've, I've written what conditions he submitted to me, so that y'all can, can see that while he's discussing it, and I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to Nick.
Just go back to the image that has the, the intersections on it, just. Right, Nick Tuttle, city engineer, and the last time we were here talking about this, we had a traffic impact study that had been submitted and reviewed by us, and comments were sent out just a little, just a little bit after the meeting. And since then, we've had actually a couple of times that we have had the, the impact study remitted, submitted back to us and, and reviewed comments. And last week, we gave them an approval on a traffic impact study, and you had that traffic impact study included in your packet. Hopefully you had a chance to at least look at the recommendations and the conclusions in the study. I just want to highlight two things, and, and it really goes back to the two things that Brian Rose just put on the screen as conditions that we would suggest adding for approval for this. And so as we spoke before, we talked about our concerns being the intersections that are identified on that image as number one, which is for the boat ramp access and the intersection with existing Douglas Bend and Foxland Boulevard, which is intersection number three on, on the picture. We'll start with, I, I think the most important one, which is the intersection of Foxland Boulevard and Douglas Bend Road, and just highlight a couple of things that the study came back and told us. With the full buildout of Foxland Harbor Marina, the, the level of service at that intersection, and I'll just highlight the, the AM peak, just to, to keep things simple so we're not going back and forth. But the AM peak hour, you've got a level of service F. And just to simply put it, just think about your school grades. When you talk about level of service, A, B, C, D, they do use E, so that one's a little bit different, but F is considered the worst grade that you can have for an intersection. Now, once, you can't have a really bad F and, and an okay F, if you want to look at it that way, but, so AM peak, level of service F, with an average delay of, of 53 seconds. And, I'm sorry, that, the, the worst delay was, was 53 seconds for that northbound movement. So if you're coming from the county and you're heading north towards, yeah, actually, I'm telling you that incorrect, because that's when they, that's when they come back in and put the always stop. So actually, you don't have any delay on, on Douglas Bend Road as you're heading north without any improvements that are happening. You would have, all the delay would be on the side street, so Foxland Boulevard coming to either side is going to have massive delay, and that's what makes the intersection as a, as an F overall. So the recommendations from the study were to put an always stop in because you have a failing intersection. So the always stop moved the level of service F in the AM peak to a level of service D in the AM peak. So it showed an improvement, it got it to what is considered a passing grade, but it is still, yeah, it is still significant delay. What it does is it kind of balances the delay, moves it from the side street to add a whole lot of delay on the, the through street, which is Foxland Boulevard, and that's where we see, you know, some significant issues that we wouldn't recommend to, to install that. We would go with their optional recommendation, which was the roundabout. So just again, to highlight, when they do put the always stop in, they're projecting an average 53-second delay in that AM peak hour heading north. So instead of going through there in just a couple of seconds, you're now waiting a minute to get through the intersection, to, to think about it simply. And the part that is worse, and it goes off the image to, to the south, but that queue backs up to the top of the hill. If you are familiar with the area, there's a hill and a curve, so as you come around the curve down on the south end and, and the, the hill crest, that's where the queue would back up to with an always stop. Again, it is considered from a traffic standpoint, an acceptable condition, and that's why the, the engineer recommended to go with the, the cheaper alternative, which was the always stop. But they, they did give us the information on the, the roundabout, which showed an improvement in the AM peak to a level of service A, which brought the average delay just below 10 seconds going through the intersection. So significant improvement. The, the queue distance is 60 feet, which is three cars, and, and that is what they're projecting to be the worst case on, on an average day. And so from a, from a traffic standpoint, if money were not an object here, it's a no-brainer to, to go with the, the roundabout as opposed to an always stop. And so that's our recommendation, and you saw that as a, a condition of approval that we're recommending. The other piece of this is back at the, the boat ramp access there at intersection one, and I'll skip ahead to that little image to try to explain this to you a little bit more. The thing that the study showed here, and we have experienced already in, in, in life as it exists now, is there's just a short little turn lane that allows you to, to turn in and access the boat ramp. It's only probably about 50 feet in length, so if you get one vehicle in there with a long boat, you've taken up the entire storage area, and that also restricts what you can do with improving turn lanes that are going to Nashville Pike, because they're stacked end to end with turn lanes going north and turn lanes going south. And so what they're recommending here in this study, and, and it really only works properly if you have the roundabout, and so we're in full agreement with this, but we think it further emphasizes the need for the roundabout, is to restrict the turning movement on this intersection to not allow the left turn in to the boat ramp. And what would, it would require is people to, to go down and actually use the roundabout to circle around and then head back north. The, the roundabout would be designed to handle trailer traffic and be able to do it without coming to a stop or jackknifing or, or anything of that nature. It would certainly be appropriately designed. We, a, a good example of, of a roundabout design that I think we've seen in our area is, a lot of folks go to Sam's, I know my wife does enjoy going to Sam's Club in Hendersonville. They made a, a recent improvement, past one or two years, to add a roundabout intersection there at that, the entrance to go into Sam's Club. It's tractor-trailers pass-through, I mean, you're talking 53-foot trailers that can pass through the intersection without any trouble, and it's in very close proximity to a signalized intersection, which shows you that the effectiveness of the intersection is there and not creating any delay out onto what is a, an arterial roadway for them. And so we would be emphasizing a proper design to allow not tractor-trailer traffic, but large boat traffic to be able to, to make a U-turn movement in the roundabout. It's going to be necessary, and so we would emphasize that. The other movements in and out of the boat access would not be restricted, but the illustration here was to try to show just not being able to, to try to physically restrict that left turn movement in, so that we could make improvements to the turning lanes going to Nashville Pike, because they're showing that there's a little bit additional queue that would come off of Nashville Pike, and so they're adding about 50-foot of, of queuing space to the turning lanes as you head north to Nashville Pike. So just fast forward to the, the last slide, I think it was the last slide that Mr. Rose had placed there. He's showing a requested additional condition of approval from planning, and then the two conditions that we would like to have added to this zoning approval from the engineering side, and these were things that were called out in the traffic impact study. And so install a roundabout at the intersection of Douglas Bend Road and Foxland Boulevard, and then modify the existing boat ramp driveway to prohibit left turns from Douglas Bend Road as described in the approved traffic impact study. Just full transparency, I think with these improvements, you're actually going to see overall improvement, level of service on Douglas Bend. The only thing that suffers, and I know I talked with Councilman Hayes about this, as he's been asking, asking this question, was the queuing on Nashville Pike for, if you're heading west, going towards Hendersonville on Nashville Pike, you want to make a left-hand turn onto Douglas Bend Road, that queue length does increase. There's, there's really not a lot you can do with that. You can, you can't increase the turn lane, it's already a two-way left turn lane, but you are talking about, I can't remember the number, I don't have that one written down, I don't think, but I think it was on average a two-to-three car length. We did not ask the consultant to, to really try to optimize the timing at that intersection, because as you all know, we have a timed coordinated system now along Nashville Pike, and that's something that we'll want to plug into, to our own system and make sure that we can optimize it and not really have a, a big detriment that would be played to the rest of our, our timed coordinated signal system on Nashville Pike. So slight trade-off there. I think we do have great improvements that are, that are recommended by us, planned by the developer on Douglas Bend Road, but just a, a slight degrade there with a little bit longer queue on Nashville Pike. So that's what I've got, and I don't know if Mr. Rose had anything else, but I'll yield the floor.
Hey, Nick. I think that it's imperative if, if we was to vote this thing that we'd have to do a roundabout, but my concern is the size of the roundabout. I know you just spoke that a, a boat and a trailer would be able to. However, I do think there'll be tractors and trailers needing to use a roundabout. I just come back from South Dakota with a Prevo and pulling a trailer that's 85-foot, and I'm certain there's people that live down in Douglas Bend that have motor homes or Prevos or trailers, are they going to be able to navigate around that roundabout? Is it going to be big enough, and do we have enough hingress and egress to support that?
So, I don't know that we have, we have, I think we have one image that showed.
Did you give a measurement?
We, we would be looking at, just from a, a number that I have in my head, at least a, a 110-foot diameter circle that this roundabout fits in. The, the illustration that they created, I think I passed it, the illustration that they created, there it is, that's, that's not it. That's, that won't, that won't get us there. I do believe that.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
I do believe that we can hold the, the curb radio on the west side of the road, which is the, the vintage Foxland Harbor side, and, and, and have the widening happen towards the, the Foxland Marina side. There is a lot of roundabout, or, I'm sorry, a lot of right-of-way that's available there, and then the rest of the, the property that is adjacent to the right-of-way is actually owned by Tennessee Grasslands. And so we're, we're in a good spot. There are some utilities that we've already been in contact with, White House Utility District and Gallatin Public Utilities on the utilities that are crossing right there. on the utilities that are crossing right there. I think those will be more of the challenge than anything else. I think we've got the space. It's just about, when you build a roundabout, you do want to try to get it flat, the circle as flat as you can. Essentially, obviously, it's going to be sloped from the center out. But you don't really want to put it on a, you know, a grade where it's going to be tilted on its side. And there is a little bit of grade. Obviously, it begins to rise very quickly once you get on into the development. But there is a little bit of grade that you've got to work with there. And so utilities is really my bigger concern in trying to make sure. And White House Utilities has been great already to discuss the project with. So they were ready to go out there and put a couple of potholes to get some depths on those lines and start to analyze it and take a look. So I'm optimistic for sure that it can be built. And it can be built right.
You know, one thing that you mentioned is that when you turn in, you'll have to go past the boat ramp and go around the roundabout and make your way back. I would think that there's going to be a lot of people wondering what to do unless there's signage put up there or something.
Absolutely. Yeah.
That still really doesn't sit too well with me. I mean, going up there, going around a roundabout and then coming back.
Right. So you remember the Vehicle Emissions Testing Center on Grassland? We had a, not the same issue, but it was an issue where people decided they were just going to stop right there coming off Nashville Pike and just wait. And the queue began to back up into Nashville Pike. And believe it or not, we put some signs out there and people began to understand if they would go down to the end of that road, use the cul-de-sac to turn around and head back north and queue back that way, that they could be good neighbors and not cause any problems. And sometimes signage does work. Not a lot of times. That's why I don't want to just use signage to prevent that left turn from happening. I want to see, you know, a physical obstruction there with an island that would be put on Douglas Bend. But we would certainly want to put some signage there close to the intersection with the boat ramp access that tells boat ramp access via roundabout as a U-turn, something of that nature. We hadn't got the verbiage really thought about or thought through. But we would certainly be looking to put some signage up to try to educate people. And it's probably only going to take one or two times for the person to realize that's the way to do it. So.
Nick, if that was the come to be, you know, what about the people? Would you do half of it at a time? Or how are the people going to get in and out of Douglas Bend during that?
We haven't got.
That far.
Need to see how it's laid out first to see how.
Okay, that's enough of ask and ask. Please, I hate to have to ask our officers to intervene. Let's be respectful of the speaker, please.
We're kind of working through some similar issues with block four and Hancock Street and trying to figure out what the timing, what we are expecting there in that particular situation. And we think it's going to work out the same as this one, that we would maintain traffic, that you wouldn't be allowed to completely close the intersection. And so that, that's another challenge that you've got to work through. But, but yeah.
Councilman Jevons, sorry, y'all. I was expecting to hear from representatives before y'all started asking questions, but we'll go this way.
Thank you, Mayor. We're talking about roundabout a lot. And that looks like being the magic wand to make that happen. But is there in a study, they say the roundabout will be preferred, but it's not feasible?
What the comments were was they felt like there would be utility conflicts or, I forgot the other conflict that they pointed out, but it's.
Right-of-ways and so.
Again, what I saw was looking at the utilities, contacting, and it's not the traffic engineer's role typically is to go ahead and begin to plan those things out. But I went ahead and looked ahead to see what right-of-way constraints we had. And I feel like we've identified a solution there. And then already checking with the utility providers, water, sewer, gas, those are the main providers that we would have to deal with. It looks like electric, Comcast, AT&amp;T. Obviously, they're aerial, but poles are not near the intersection and won't be a problem, which is usually your, a big challenge to try to coordinate timing of construction.
Move everything, but who on the land where that roundabout would be planned? Because if I follow Councilman Funnell, we're going to have to have a big, big roundabout. That means I don't do boating, so I don't tow boats. I don't, but.
So I'll point on the screen here again. What I believe would be the best way to do this is to, just as they have shown on the west side, have the outer edge of the roundabout hit essentially where the curb radio are now. And so no right-of-way would be necessary to be acquired on that side, because you're not changing those corners. And so the circle would all move in this direction. And from what I can tell, you won't have to get to the point where you're actually encroaching into that existing island that is there going up Foxon Boulevard into the Foxon Development. But you would need to have right-of-way on this corner to the northeast and on this corner to the southeast. And the property owner for both of those corners is Tennessee Grasslands.
So they will give the right-of-way, I suppose. A word I had during comments was context. And I like that word. To come back to the other solution to say, we're going to require people to go to the roundabout, use that to make a turn and come back. You and me talk about that for years and years just near my property on Aries Lane with a fork, where we had that giant fork who was actually made so people can't turn left, where they're supposed to turn right, and they still turn left. So, and if someone, you know, it's human. If someone starts to look on the left and see that the ramps start to get crowded and you see a guy going in front of him and figure, I can get the spot I'm not going to have if I follow that guy, trust me, they're going to try to make a left turn. So I'm like, I like simple solutions where, because we still deal with human being and, you know, that. I don't like that idea, because I don't, even with sign, look at the signs we have on Aries Lane. There is no left turn, turn right. There is sign on the ground. And I don't know if you remember years ago, I actually bring video of some of my truck who tried to turn there and we got stuck on the island trying to make a left turn. So people are going to do that. And.
Okay. We go back to questions and let y'all debate in a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Council, Vice Mayor Hayes.
My question about roundabout.
No, anybody else have anything for Nick? Because I was going to get Brian back up there for a minute.
I'd like to, thank you. Do you really see the roundabout as a solution? Or is that just getting us by?
Oh, it's absolutely a solution. Yes.
I see it as a mess. And I hate when we help create the mess. You've got people that are going to come in, they're going to want to turn left there in the boat ramp. And you're going to go up and have them do a roundabout, which a number of people don't have to navigate roundabouts. They're not used to those. I'm pulling a long truck and a 32 foot trailer that doesn't bend in the middle. And, you know, I'm having to navigate that. I think people with smaller boats are going to turn left there anyway, just like the little triangles. I think, Mr. Rose, did you call them a kidney? Is that the official name for the triangle that's supposed to keep you from right in, right out? We see that every day. People swing around and go in those. And I see the same thing happening here. I think, I'm not sold on the solution that it's really going to help. It may, I don't know. That's why I'm asking you, the expert, you know, is this a real solution or is this just a fix?
I mean, I'm still going to, I don't know what you mean by real solution or fix, but this.
Is this a Band-Aid that's going to get us by? Or is this, man, this is the answer to what we need?
If you want to stop people from making that left turn, I would suggest taking the island all the way across the frontage.
But then you can't turn left out of the.
But then it makes it a right in, right out. And that was what I wanted to do to begin with. But that forces anybody that wants to head south back to Nashville Pike. And so we wanted to keep, we want to be sensitive to that. But I do believe that you can design that to where it's going to be extremely uncomfortable to make that left turn in, especially if you've got a boat trailer and you've paid, I don't even want to know how much some of these boats are cost people. And you're having to run over a curb and an island with the back wheels of that trailer to get in there. If it were mine, my money, I want to be careful. And I'm going to go down to the roundabout and make that turn so that I can get into that boat ramp launch without damaging my boat. I do think that your passenger cars, you know, things of that nature, they're going to shortcut, because we're not going to be able to create enough restriction to keep just your regular four-door automobile from making that left-hand turn. But the real problem really is the boat and the trailer when they're trying to pull that and they're going slow and they're trying to navigate that turn. They're waiting as northbound traffic clears so that they can make that turn. So now they're creating a traffic problem back into the Nashville Pike intersection. And so I feel really good that this will very strongly urge folks that are pulling those trailers to go down to the roundabout, make that U-turn and turn into the launch area.
Any other questions for Mr. Tull? And Mr. Hayes has one for Mr. Rose. Councilman Jevons.
Just a quick one, Nick. On, when you send a traffic study, there were actually two traffic studies. There was one which has got made from Ragan Smith's and there was another one on the back.
Do you mean like the original study from?
2000 something to 2022. I was wondering why, why there was two.
Did it include the Marina?
There was one for Volker from June 22 and one from Ragan Smith's.
Okay. There is a.
Yeah.
Volker is a company that does perform traffic studies. I don't recall, Mr. Jevons. I wasn't ready for that question. We've had a lot of studies on this development over the years, but.
The most part, that would be the most recent, I do believe.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that, yeah, you said. Thank you, Nick.
Trace?
Yeah. Hey, Brian. Question, switching gears, about the building height. Are you saying that they're not asking for a variance for the building height now? Is that what you were saying? It's kind of confusing what you said.
I'm saying they typically have to ask for the variance from the building height from the planning commission during that process. But that part wasn't really addressed. And so we're making it a condition of approval. That number has kind of bounced a little bit from, you know, they had originally asked for 75 feet at the, on their original plan. Then they came back and emailed and said, hey, we made a mistake. We need it at 87 feet. But that 87 feet had been to the top of their building. The regulation is actually to the average height between the eaves and the ridge, which would be that 78 foot.
So are the buildings that they're proposing, are they the same height as the existing buildings? They going to be the same height?
So I don't know that for sure. I was under the impression that those were more around 68, something like that. But I can't tell you that for sure, because the drawings are actually, they don't have the number. And I don't have the plans for those previous buildings. So I can't tell you what the exact height of those buildings.
And it may be that the representatives can address that. I think, I think I recall, and I'll probably say it wrong, but I think I recall that they were taller, but they sit lower. And the others were shorter, but they sit higher. And so that's why I kept asking to see, you know, some scale comparison.
The way the measurement works is it's from the lowest grade, which can vary, right? So if it's from the lowest grade to that midpoint, but yet you have other buildings that might have a different lowest grade, then you're going to need a different amount.
Craig, what was you going to ask?
Stop. What?
I wrote it down. From what I understood, you said, what Brian Rose said, that right now it's already approved at maximum 87 foot.
That was from the previous approval back for the four condo buildings.
2023.
And so this would just carry forward that same.
Okay.
You all, Councilman Jevons.
Thank you, Mayor. This stuff changed so much. When you say the four condos, you're talking about the Revery, what aside?
Yes.
All right. So I have a question for, probably for.
Wait, I want to, I want to make, I think what you said was from 23, which would be the four original. You're talking about Revery, which were built prior to that.
So, no.
Just to make sure we're clear.
The Revery buildings were approved with an 87-foot height exception.
Right.
Even the new proposed ones, which were approved three years ago.
Those are the new ones. That's what I'm trying to make sure it's.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm trying to understand. Because I heard, that was actually a funny ending. That was fantastic, talking about time. And we're talking about, so that's what I'm trying to understand. Because we talked about one who did it from August 2222 and one who did it for 2623. So which one is the 2222? And which one is the 2623?
Foxon Harbor Marina Plan, which was for the slips and the Marina and the fuel pumps. That was your 2023 plan. The Foxon Revery was the 2022 in August. That's, that was for the 64 condo units.
So that, the four condos with the 87 approved. Okay, so.
Does say it right there, maximum 87.
So my question there, that, that does no, it's not valid anymore for me. Because before all that, this amendment go to full voting, that dropped. That's going to be more than three years. So that should not be, we should not even talk about that.
So I'll try to address that. The way that we treat those is, of course, FMDPs come after your PMDP. Your PMDP, if you get that approved and then get even one FMDP within that PMDP approved and start construction, that vests your PMDP for a period of 15 years. That's the statute regulations that allow your, your development to be able to be vested for a longer period of time so you can actually get all the construction done. So, and then, of course, we do PMDP amendments. And those PMDP amendments help to start that clock over again. So they're fine as far as time approval.
Gentlemen, do you want to, are you, do you want to hear from your representatives for the project at this point?
Sure.
They had some stuff to show, too. Okay, I'd welcome whomever to come forward.
Y'all just please give your name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council. My name is Joe Godfrey with Godfrey Development Group, 1643 Nashville Pike, Suite 100, Gallatin. So I started working in Foxland in 2008. I moved here in 2007. The maintenance entrance was almost completed. The golf course was about to open. Foxland Boulevard was built and the Foxland plans that was, were presented to me showed the master plan, showed Marina going on the front corner, condos along the lake and most of what has been built in Foxland. The first thing I wanted to point out is this project was completed right after I got here and the, the drawing is showing in yellow, the old Douglas Bend Road, which was a small two-lane road. Piece of it is still there connecting the boat ramp area over to Foxland. And the developer, original developer spent millions of dollars funding the improvement of Douglas Bend Road into what it is today for the development and buildout of Foxland. And I'll address the unit count and different things like that in a couple other slides. But this, this was done for traffic improvement for the complete buildout of, of Foxland.
You can use this if you want to use the pointer on the screen.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Awesome. All right, very good. So when I started working in Foxland, one of the first things I did was get involved in the, the condo project on the lake and the proposed Marina. And so we engaged a local architect. I worked with him on the design of the project and we ultimately came out with, with this project right here. So this was two pieces. One is the assumption of a Marina getting approved, which would, would have been something that Cor would have to do. And everything on land had the condos and then it also had the parking that would go along with a proposed Marina. And right here in the, in the front, right there is retail in this area. And then the condo buildings spread out throughout this area. So on the table up here, the table showed the densities. It showed the parking. It showed the retail, the Marina, all the different parts and pieces to what would ultimately get built out on that site. At this time, this was being done, there was just a, a couple houses, maybe six houses in Foxland. Most of the rest of the development had not been developed yet. And, and then I started working on the, the development of the rest of, of Foxland. This project was submitted to the city and was approved and was incorporated into the master plan of Foxland. So the area highlighted in blue is everything that was on the color rendering that I just showed you. And then the, the unit count table is right here and it was the units for each phase of the entire development through buildout. And down here in, in yellow has the, the different multi-unit buildings. This area back here are townhomes. There's townhomes here, along here, and then we have the condos in this area. All of that at the time totaled 843 units at full buildout in Foxland. This is the recorded plat of the area where the proposed project is. And what I wanted to point out was this track of land was, was all one track. And then as I started developing, we, we split this into phases. So we have Phase 2.1. This phase here is where we built the pool and fitness center area. This is Phase 2.3, 2.4, and 2.5. And so this allowed us to develop each section as individual, sorry, as individual projects. And so on this recorded plat, it, it split the phases up and took those 300 units and we allocated them to different, different sections. So this right here is the table that's showing what was allocated is we pulled 90 of the units to put over here and then left 210 for this site right here. Intent here was to do a higher density project up towards the front and then we had the 90 units going in the back. And that's how that went from 300 to 210. The, um, it was mentioned a few minutes ago about the timing. And so on the approvals, and one thing I've been careful to do is every time we would do a, uh, we had the FMDP, this one is an amended PMDP, would be to include the other phases, um, to include these phases, even though, even though we were building, say, this one, this entire thing would get submitted so that the unit count and the number of units would be on another later dated approval to retain the timing of the units and, and approvals. So this table right here is showing this portion having approval for the 210 units, having the building height of a max five stories and 87 feet. Uh, the buildings that we built on the other side, um, they vary in height only because of the ground and the sloping and, and stem wall heights and things like that. But the, the massing of the buildings is the same as what we built over here. Another thing I wanted to point out is that, um, everybody that purchased a, a unit from us on the lakefront condos signed in their purchase agreement that they were aware that there could be additional development, a Marina, it could be right behind their buildings, it could block their views, all those different things. So every purchase agreement has that paragraph that talks about what could be possibly put on the lake behind their, their unit. And when they purchased, everyone signed for that. And, um, I just wanted to point out a few, a few things real quick before I close. One is that the 64-unit project that was put up earlier that we had submitted not too long ago, it only included like four and a half acres of that whole site that is currently now the seven acres. And so even though we had 64 there, the whole 300 included the other, the other piece. And so I just wanted to point that out because the density is still under what was originally approved. And then, um, the other is the, the Marina portion, uh, we've always looked at the Marina in, in two separate pieces. One is what's on the water and the boat ramp. It's all controlled by the Corps of Engineers. It's a process that the, the Army Corps of Engineers has to go through. They look at everything from the boat traffic, the environmental, the erosion, everything that could possibly be affected by that Marina. I also attended a public meeting that the Corps had over at Vols State and they listened to everything that was proposed of, of for and against and heard all of the comments and some of them that I've heard here. And the, the highest level official was there and some other Corps people, and they took all that information back and determined that the Marina was feasible. It was needed and it was a good project and they approved it. And that part of it is done and approved. The part that goes with it is just the parking spaces and that, the parking spaces are what is on the, the overall plan for approval for the city. Just a few other bullet points. The plan being presented has 98 less condo units than previously approved. Uh, the plan that was previously approved did include retail and a restaurant. The zoning has always been in place for it. So anybody that, uh, that wanted to look at that for the history of since I've been there and since Foxland started, that land was zoned to have commercial and all the different things that could be possibly proposed on there. The, uh, the Foxland Master Development Plan was approved for 848 units to be built in Foxland Harbor. And even with the approval of the project being submitted, there, there will be 98 less units than that on the total buildout. And just to point out again, that, that Douglas Bend Road was paid for and improved by the developer to, to be able to put 848 units in Foxland Harbor. And, um, and it will end up being less than that with what they're doing. And I appreciate your time. I just wanted to give you a brief history of, of all the different processes we've gone through. And I just want you to know that the original vision and plan for Foxland Harbor and one reason it was renamed to Foxland Harbor is because of the anticipation of a proposed Marina and the project as it would be built out as currently proposed. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? All right, appreciate it.
Okay, perfect. Appreciate it. Thanks. Hi, I'm Matt Huff with Campbell Design Collaborative. We appreciate the opportunity to return with this revised presentation tonight, which directly addresses several key issues raised at the last meeting, particularly traffic, parking, Foxland HOA entry, and proposed building sizes. Before we dive into those, I want to quickly revisit the vision. Foxland Harbor is thoughtfully planned mixed-use waterfront district that brings together a new full-service Marina, walkable public plaza, and neighborhood-scale retail and food offerings, and 112 luxury-for-sale condominiums reduced from the 210 previously entitled units. This is a plan that's designed to enhance the lakefront access, support public gatherings, and come, and complement the character of the Foxland community. So, um, I know traffic was already talked about pretty at, at length. So out of respect for everyone's time, I'm just going to touch on a couple pieces there. Intersection number two, Douglas Bend Road at Project Access 1. This is a new full-access connection to Douglas Bend Road. A dedicated southbound left turn lane is proposed with at least 150 feet of stacking capacity. This access point was not part of the original and, and currently approved development plan, but we believe it is a welcome improvement. Additionally, we will install directional signage within the site to encourage vehicles to exit via this access point, helping to minimize traffic on Foxland Boulevard. You all spoke in, at length about intersection number three, Douglas Bend Road at Foxland Boulevard, but I do think it's important to talk about the developer's position on it. This intersection is, is free-flowing traffic for, from, for Douglas Bend, but vehicles on Foxland Boulevard must stop before turning onto Douglas Bend. The traffic impact study recommends upgrading this to an always-stop that's shown in option A, which is both the developer's preferred solution and the traffic engineer's formal recommendation. Option B, provided at the request of Gallatin engineering staff, presents the roundabout in this location. And while we know that there would be design challenges, should the roundabout become a condition of approval, the developer is open to working collaboratively with, with the city, with staff, to explore its feasibility and pursue it as the chosen option, should it be determined to be the chosen option. Intersection four, although site users will be encouraged to, via directional signage, to exit the site onto Douglas Bend, this intersection is recommended to be full access point, a full access point to the proposed residential condos. We believe this supports the internal circulation and distributes trips efficiently without creating unnecessary disruption elsewhere on the site. As for the parking, um, so based on the City of Gallatin's requirements, the new development requires 455 parking spaces. This development proposes to bring 458 new spaces to the Foxland campus available for use by all programs and users, although none of the spaces are specifically reserved. This total includes structured parking beneath the condo buildings, surface parking for the Marina, the restaurant, and retail users, and boat ramp access spaces. It, it's worth noting that the golf cart, bike, and dockside boat parking will be provided to supplement the vehicular spaces. However, none of these spaces are counted toward that total 458. They're all in addition to that 458 vehicular spaces provided. Parking demand across the campus is also naturally staggered by season, which helps reduce peak congestion. Marina and retail demand is highest in the summer. Golf traffic tends to peak in the spring and fall with steady numbers throughout the heat of the summer. And the largest clubhouse events are typically in the winter when both Marina and golf activity are, are lower. The owner will be actively managing the property to ensure parking demand is met throughout the year, including scheduling events and uses in, in a coordinated fashion. Due to the need for grading and screening of the adjacent parking areas, some modifications will be necessary to the Foxland Boulevard entrance. We understand that the residents value the current entry sign and design, and our goal is to retain that character while refining the landscaping and integrating new features to fit the updated plan. The result will be consistent with the existing aesthetic, but more functional and visually cohesive. And then as far as building height and massing is concerned, following, and following our previous discussion and further collaboration with city staff, the developer is now requesting a maximum building height of 78 feet, as Mr. Rose pointed out. This is measured from the ground elevation on the lake side of the buildings, and this includes structured parking beneath the condos that's necessary to maximize views and preserve site walkability. Compared to nearby structures, the proposed buildings are similar in height to the existing Reverie condos. However, the project site sits anywhere from five to 30 feet lower than Reverie, particularly at the northern portion of the site, the far right end of the image on the screen, where the mixed-use buildings are located. The topographic character of the Marina site significantly reduces the visual impact from both the lake and surrounding roadways. So what you're seeing here, as Mr. Rose talked about, we've got existing Reverie buildings over here and then we've got the proposed buildings on this side. The far-left proposed residential condo sits at about the same elevation as the Reverie buildings. So with the same height that we're asking for, at the same elevation, that's why you're seeing that building and those buildings look pretty much the same. As you move to the right, you're going down a couple feet for the first building, maybe five or 10 feet for the next, and then it really starts to drop off until the mixed-use buildings sit about 30 feet below this first building. So while we're asking for 78 feet in height, which is the same that they've got over here at Reverie and, um, and what this building and this building are asking for the same thing, these buildings at this end are going to look 30 feet shorter than the buildings on the Reverie site. So, um, yes, 70, 78 feet is the request and that's come after discussions with city staff, and I think we're all on the same page now. To wrap up, we're not asking for more density. In fact, we're, we're reducing it from what Mr. Godfrey explained before, from 210 entitled units to 112, while creating a more walkable, community-oriented waterfront. Foxland Harbor delivers a new Marina at Old Hickory Lake. High-end for-sale residential units, locally-focused retail and restaurant spaces, and thoughtful traffic and parking solutions backed by analysis that you all have now seen. We're proud of this plan and believe it reflects both the character and the future of Gallatin's waterfront, not just for those who live here, but for the entire community. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Vice Mayor Hayes, you recognize with a question.
One more thing that I wish you'd address, and I don't know what you can say about it, but.
so that everyone can see what it is that we're, we're talking about. It's just, at this point, we, we don't know the answer to that.
I mean, are y'all selling all the units?
Yes, yes. There are four sale units.
With, will they have an HOA, I'm assuming?
My assumption is yes, but that's an assumption right now.
Will it be the same old HOA as the Revery? I mean, we all be, will it be combined?
That's, uh, I'd have to, I'm not sure about that right now.
Okay. Is that something y'all can find out?
Yeah, just can't answer right now.
I know we've got at least another month and a half of this, but yeah.
Right, right.
Councilman Juwans?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you say it's all for sale, but, uh, you know, again, we cannot enforce that if, uh, we've seen that on several developments in town where they were all for sale and, uh, giant conglomerate came and bought all the units and rented them, and we have no control on that. So, um, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence on that, but I'm going to come back again to the roundabout because your own traffic study, the, the one you paid for, say, the roundabout is not feasible. It's, it's on the paper. So, um, if that's the magic solution, we, we're going to have issues. The, the parking issue, uh, again, I'm going to base on my own experience. Um, I'm not going to be mean, I'm going to be critical, okay? I make, I make the nuance, based on my own experience. When I hear, we'll make sure that the parking demand is met for what, what we need, um, I was nicely invited to, uh, to the restaurant on Friday, and actually the food is really good there, um, and I could not park. There was no park, and that was a Friday, uh, and nothing, I could not park. I didn't have a parking spot. I actually had to park illegally on the property to be able to, uh, meet the person who invited me, and you probably see that all the time because you spend time there. Uh, so...
What's your question? Get to the question, please.
It's comments. Uh, I have, I have a question on the, uh, can you go back to, because again, I don't boat, so I have no, no idea of what's going on, but again, when I was driving back, I see our, our common ramp, how you call that, the ramp we have to put the boats in the water that everybody use?
Public ramp?
The public ramp. Uh, so what I'm trying to understand, when, when I look at, when I look there, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but...
That the public ramp, yeah?
Yes, well, yes. So, we're going to have the public ramp, uh, in the middle of private slips, and, uh, the parking there, I'm going to have an issue too with the parking there because the people who are going to pay for the slips, uh, they're going to come park on that, on that parking. They're not going to go park somewhere else and walk because again, we're talking about human beings. Even if you tell them you can park there because it's reserved for the public ramp, they're still going to come and park there to go to their boat. So that, that's another issue for me. How, how are we going to make sure that that public ramp is still available for, uh, the people who can't afford to pay for putting a boat in your, in your slips and...
Councilman Juwans, one dock is off that, the other three are off the other.
Right, they would have to access those, the main docks from the other part.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm talking about the one on the left, but...
They would have to access from those two points. They could not, you know. I just want to make sure you understood.
So the dock, the dock was here, all right? That dock?
Yep.
Are going to be accessing from here at the same, the same spot that we have the public ramp. That, that was my question. So, uh, how can we make sure that, um, the people who still want to access the public ramp can access this and actually park the, the current trailer there?
That might be the, I know we discussed this before, but I don't recall the answer about the parking that's being created at the public ramp.
Yeah, so, well, we've, we're providing additional, some additional parking over there. It's not, you can only provide so much. And then we've, we've got golf cart parking over there, and that's all you can get on that land before you get into the water. It's just, just is what it is. So maybe there's a design solution at the FMDP stage that, that can help resolve some of that issue, um, but that's going to take some design efforts and I think getting the heads in the room that need to be to figure that out. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
At one point, you guys gave some kind of data point about average usage, like, based on like the marinas in the area, how many boats leave the marina during peak times, like Memorial Day or Labor Day or Fourth of July?
That might have been Bobby Reed quoting that. Bobby, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
I read that at one point, because I was surprised, because, I mean, I've observed that you would think there'd be more boats leaving the marina from the marinas I've been around, but...
Florida, Tennessee. Um, there's no sense in trying to sugarcoat that. The holidays are the big day on the lake, Fourth of July being the biggest one. Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, you won't have a place to park. I mean, they'll be parked anywhere they can get. They'll be, I mean, everybody comes to the lake, every slip owner will be there. Normally, they get there two or three days in advance, but there's three days on the lake that is very congested. I mean, there's, there's no way out of it. I mean, you just...
It always has been at that one, I know.
I mean, I go to lakes, Lake Cumberland, Fourth of July. I'm not exaggerating. Them people were walking over a mile to get to the boat ramp. They had to park their truck and trailer a mile after they launched their boat to get back to their boat. But it's just that one holiday. And as far as the, the slips that we're referring to on the left side of the boat ramp, those are in another phase, three, phase three, year three, year four down the road. And as, as you probably know, they're going to build a new bridge in 2027, I think, is the date for that to happen. And when that happens, we're going to ask to move those slips over, still in our lease area, but more downstream from where they're at now, get them out of that location. So that won't be a problem in the future as far as parking. And while I'm up here, and we're going to have another meeting, I would ask, like to ask this body to clarify to everybody, because we're very repetitive about issues with the marina, issues with dredging, issues with environment. It needs to be clarified that that's not a discussion that we need to discuss anymore. It's over with. The marina is permitted. The Corps of Engineers did it. We have a 30-year lease with the Corps. The Corps has stated we don't need to dredge. We had a very extensive environmental study done, but to me, none of that's pertinent to why we're here tonight. But every time I come to these meetings, everybody just keeps talking about it over and over and over. And I wish that somebody would, would stand up and say, "This body doesn't apply to that. We don't need to hear about that. It's over with." Yes.
I got a question. Will the boat slips all be bought, be built immediately, or will they be as needed?
Well, our, we, we created a five-year plan with the Corps, and we have to adhere to that. The fir, the first year is important, and we need to start to work on that first-year plan. And the first-year plan costs us putting about 200 slips.
So most of that part of the construction will be over quicker?
Yes. We're going to put in 200 slips, our fuel dock, and ship's door. First phase.
Actually, I, I disagree with you, say, we, we should not talk about it because we have to talk about it. It's, it's not just a boat on the water, it's everything. Everything is linked to it, that's why you have it on a rendering.
I couldn't agree more.
And, uh, something, when I, I hear it's controlled by the Corps, no. You, you guys can come back to the Corps and say, "Hey, uh, we listen to everybody there, to everybody around us, we, we want to do what's right with the citizen." You, you don't have to do that, but you could, and go back to the Corps and say, "Hey, we decided, we, we're going to build only 100." The Corps is not going to say no. The Corps gave you a lease to the max you can build, but the Corps didn't tell you build that max, I suppose.
I, I, Mr. Reed, I know that there's some expectation with the Corps because that's how they evaluate the, um, the need to cross the lake. So I know that, like, I, I don't know what you submitted to the Corps exactly, but I know that when it comes back, they have that expectation. I don't know if there would be...
Well, we certainly asked for more than we got.
Did you?
You know, the Corps made the decision what was feasible for this location and what we should have. So, I mean, the Corps is the final, the Corps is the final say on any related issues to the things I just previously messaged. This, this body here, I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, but you don't have a voice in it. You don't have, you don't have any say in it. You, these people that come here and say...
In the water.
Limit to 100 slips, make them put in a double boat ramp, make them do an environmental, address this dredging, these are not issues for you. And it's just taking up our time and your time.
Mr. Reed...
Hey, I have plenty of time. I have no problem, you know? I'm here, they give me free food too, so it's even better.
Yeah.
Mr. Reed, I, um, someone spoke earlier about, um, availability at the existing marinas and plans to add on to the existing marinas, which was contrary to what I had heard. Um, but I'm not saying they're wrong because I certainly may not know, but I didn't know if you knew anything about that. Were you here when they were talking about that one marina locally was...
It was Gallatin Marina.
Was, was allowed to add a whole lot of slips, and I don't know how on earth they would add with no parking.
Mr. Shobey said they were allowed to have 100, add 100 and something slips.
But they still haven't met the parking...
I can, I can tell you that that's not true. They've asked for it. They've asked for, for additional slips. Of course, they were the ones that said that, you know, we didn't need any more slips on the lake, but that's near here or there. But, but when this came about, the Corps, before they would issue us a lease, they were very cautious about it and wanted to see that the demand and need was really there. And they went to, they made an offering to every public marina on this lake to add additional slips if they chose to. And many of them did. Cedar Creek did, Gallatin Marina did, Cherokee did. They all added more slips. And then the Corps went back and did an additional feasibility study and said that was not sufficient to meet the demand and followed through with NOA and issued a lease.
Didn't, um, this is going back to the first submission back prior to 2010, because there was a call for submittals, I remember this.
Yes.
You tell me if I dreamed it, because I might have. I don't think so. Prior to 2010, there was a call from submittals from the Corps. I think this site was submitted, I don't know if it was submitted by the same people or not, um, but the Corps, and I remember having conversations with the Corps at the time because they believed that there was demand for additional wet slips and dry slips on Old Hickory, but then the recession hit, and so they basically, um, withdrew, not, they didn't withdraw, but they said, "Wait back up, we're not going to consider one at this time because the Corps wants to make sure that all the marinas can remain sustainable under their jurisdiction." So I know, I remember that was a lot of conversation back when because they did not want to compromise the, the, the stability of any of the existing marinas.
Well, the, the Corps' language to me when this, when this didn't, when we weren't allowed to go through with building the original plan was that during this recession, we're not going to allow any commercial entity to be put on public waters that has the potential to fail. We want everyone to succeed, and in this economy, we're going to withdraw and back up. And that's how it came about. If, if it hadn't been for the recession in 2008, I say this because I believe it, that 380-slip marina would have been built.
Any other questions for the representatives, gentlemen? Thank you all. Or you vote?
[inaudible]
Okay, that's fine. Let's take, it's 8:25, let's take a recess until 8:40, please, and we will resume. Thank you. Yes, yes.
[inaudible][1540.15]
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you. Or you vote? Okay, it is 8:41, so we are reconvened and opening the floor for discussion for the council. Okay, that's fine. Let's take, it's 8:25, let's take a recess until 8:40, please, and we will resume. Councilman Chouax.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to state something I said before was wrong when I said
Thank you. Yes, yes.
the roundabout was not feasible, actually in a study, the exact word is not recommended. So I apologize for the miswording. Now, I have a few things where I have concern and again would bring me back to the public comments where the wind issue by adding three buildings. And, you know, I fly airplanes, I'm familiar with wind. And the first thing that came in my head when they're talking about adding buildings and the wind shift was St. Martin Airport. I don't know, you probably, some of you probably went there and you arrive over the water, everything is fine. And suddenly the airplanes start bouncing around just before landing because actually on the side of the curve, they added building and the wind shift. So I think that's a valid point of, you know, what's going to happen there by adding that. Another comment I heard was, listen to your constituents, so I can't really disagree with that. And stuff we've been brought to light and we haven't really talked about it is the short-term rentals. And I'm not against short-term rental. I think, you know, that that's part of, they exist now and people use it and some people make money with it. But I don't think a condo is a place for short-term rentals. So, again, how can we, can we poly that? I know Susan's going to start screaming at me. But, no, you're going to look at me and, so I think that should be, we should make sure that something is there to, I know, Mayor, I'm just throwing ideas. Like we talk about HOA, I think if there is an HOA, that should be part of the HOA bylaws. And I think we should have, we should have, you know, and something from the developer assuring us and when the HOA created, there is something against the short-term rental on that. Another stuff I heard that I would like to, to be part of the condition is, I heard there will be no dredging. So I would like, dredging?
Dredging.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to be put somewhere on a paper too that there won't be any. I still have issue with, with the parking because I don't see how that's going to work. And even if I said I don't do boat, I actually have a boat captain license I got when I was in the Army. So I actually drove boats and medium and big boats. So I actually have an issue when I see the plan from the split there and the public ramp. Because I see, I see accidents happen there regularly. People are going to put the boat on the water, kids are going to get on it and eat the dogs. I think there is nothing from there, coupled to the parking issue because we should not penalize the people who have boats and who are not going to pay. I think if I remember where, you told me it'll be around 2,200 a year or something like that, yeah? Something like that, to get their boat there. The traffic study, what kind of got me on the traffic study, now, we talk about traffic, but we don't talk about trailers. I suppose the traffic study is made on normal, just unit car, not trailer. Car with trailer because a car with trailer with a big boat, that's the equivalent of three cars on the land. And I don't think the traffic studies take that into account because that's...
I can't speak to how engineers evaluate what size vehicle or trucks or cars with trailers or...
I didn't trade it, so if I, that was not in there, I suppose they just do standard, standard cars. So that should be considered too because if we say we're going to have a lane with six cars and we have two, two cars with both trailers, that's six cars. So that means four behind is going to be, not going to be there.
Well, I will, I mean, information related to that is the concern on the traffic is related to the peak times of day. And realize that your intense boat traffic is going to happen on weekends and holidays when you don't have those same peak times of day. Just something to think about.
Yeah. Another comment I heard that I would like to address is the comment that having a marina and a couple of golf courses around is going to bring headquarters of big company. I lived in Santa Monica at one point in my life. There was a big marina, there was golf around and Santa Monica has maybe five or six headquarters of company, mainly DreamWorks and, and movie, movie and cartoon stuff and one, one audio recording, recording company. So I don't think that that would be a factor. So just, and again, it's real life. And for all the Fortune 500 CEOs I flew in my career, I can assure you in the conversation we had, marina never came on. Golf, sure, but marina, never. So that's another thing. So I would like to, to address, to...
Try to be a little gentler than I was earlier, maybe. Jen, are we good? Okay.
Thank you. Okay, it is 8:41, so we are reconvened and opening the floor for discussion for the council. Councilman Chouax.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to state something I said before was wrong when I said the roundabout was not feasible. Actually, in a study, the exact word is not recommended. So I apologize for the miswording. Now, I have a few things where I have concern, and again, would bring me back to the public comments where the wind issue by adding three buildings. And, you know, I fly airplanes, so I'm familiar with wind. And the first thing that came in my head when they're talking about adding building and the wind chief was St. Martin Airport. I don't know, you probably, some of you probably went there and you arrive over the water, everything is fine, and suddenly the airplane start bouncing around just before landing because actually on the side of the curve, they added building and the wind chief. So I think that's a valid point of, you know, what's gonna happen there by adding that. Another comment I heard was, listen to your constituents, so I can't really disagree with And stuff we've been brought to lot, and we haven't really talked about it, is the short-term rentals. And I'm not against short-term rental. I think, you know, that that's part of, that exists now, and people use it, and some people make money with it, but I don't think a condo is a place for short-term rentals. So, again, how can we, can we put it that? I know Susan's gonna start screaming at me, but no, you're gonna look at me and... So I think that should be, we should make sure that something is there to... I know, Mayor, I'm just throwing ideas. Like we talk about HOA, I think if there is an HOA, that should be part of the HOA bylaws. And I think we should have, we should have, you know, and something from the developer assuring us, and when the HOA created, there is something against the short-term rental on that. Another stuff I heard, I would like to, to be part of the condition, is I heard there will be no dredging, so I would like... dredging?
Dredging.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to be put somewhere on the paper, too, that there won't be any. I still have issue with, with the parking, because I don't see how that gonna work. And even if I said I don't do boat, I actually have a boat captain license I got when I was in the Army, so I actually drove boats, and medium and big boat. So I actually have an issue when I see the plan from the split there and the public ramp, because I see, I see accident happen there regularly. People gonna put the boat on the water, kids gonna get on it, and eat the dogs. I think there is nothing from there, coupled to the parking issue, because we should not penalize the people who have boats and were not gonna pay. I think if I remember where, you told me it'll be around $2200 a year, or something like that, yeah? Something like that, to get, get their boat there. The traffic study, what kind of got me on the traffic study, now, we talk about traffic, but we don't talk about trailers. I suppose the, the traffic study is made on normal, just unit car, not trailer, car with trailer, because a car with trailer, with a big boat, that the equivalent of three cars on the lane, and I don't think the traffic studies take that account, because that's...
I can't speak to how engineers evaluate what size vehicle, or trucks, or cars with trailers, or...
I didn't trade it, so if I, that was not in there, I suppose they just do standard, standard cars. So that should be considered, too, because if we say we're gonna have a lane with six cars, and we have two, two cars with both trailers, that's six cars, so that means four behind's gonna be, not gonna be there.
Well, I will, I mean, information related to that is the concern on the traffic is related to the peak times of day, and realize that your intense boat traffic is gonna happen on weekends and holidays, when you don't have those same peak times of day. Just something to think about.
Yeah. Another comment I heard that I would like to address is the comment that having a Marina and a couple of golf course arounds gonna bring headquarters of big company. I lived in Santa Monica at one point in my life. There was a big Marina, there was golf around, and Santa Monica has maybe five or six headquarters of company, mainly DreamWorks and, and movie, movie and cartoon stuff, and one, one audio recording, recording company, so I don't think that, that would be a factor. So just, and again, it's real life, and for all the Fortune 500 CEOs I flew in my career, I can assure you, in the conversation we had, Marina never came on. Golf, sure, but Marina, never. So that's another thing. So I would like to, to address, to address the, the short-term rentals. If we get a commitment from the developer in return that when the HOA is created, there will be a restriction on short-term rentals, is something we can ask?
Of course you can ask, and you can try to get a commitment. You can't otherwise force it. You remember all of that conversation that we've had in the past about short-term rentals and the law, and what's currently in our, in our zoning ordinance?
Yeah, but we can ask. You know, if I have a written commitment, that makes me happy, and people stick to written commitments generally, it's easier than just a verbal. So is that something we could have from you guys?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I piggyback on that for a second, Mr. Goodall? Can you, like, I would be interested to see what the reverie, those four condos, do for their HOA as far as rentals go. I mean, I don't, you don't have to answer that now, you might not know, but can y'all get something on that to get to us, or something, or somebody can?
The restrictive covenant, I'm sorry, Bob Goodall, 1459 Rosella Way in Gallatin, Tennessee. The, the issue of short-term rentals is a, is a good question, and for us, we have a lot of information we need to gather. My thoughts would be that we need to do a workshop. I've probably got four dozen individuals that have shown interest in having a condominium in this community. I really wanna kinda hear from them of what they want and what they're looking for, and ultimately, we're gonna draft restrictive covenants that address leases and rents, and we'll have restrictive covenants that will, that will affect that. But ultimately, for us, our plans are to sell every unit. There will be some provision where each building will be limited to investor sales, so you could have investors that come in that just, you know, they don't wanna live there, they may wanna just rent it out, but each building will have that restriction. And then for us, ultimately, we'd like to see every owner and resident in there to be a member of the golf club. So with that being said, it really kinda goes the other spectrum to what short-term rentals would be. If we have some, it would be very limited, but we, I think what we could commit to is that we'll have those restrictive covenants, and we'll present those when we go back to final master development plan. That gives us a lot of time to think through it, to get it right, to make sure that we're, we're doing the same thing. But whatever happens, whatever we do from that standpoint, it will not affect any resident nearby or in the Foxland community. Their, you know, their concerns are very important to us, and we're not gonna do anything to affect them. Thank you.
So, a few things I don't like, and you just say a word, which kinda worries me of what I was talking before we went to break, when you say investor sales. So basically, that's the scenario I, I talked about, where people gonna come by and rent. So it's, it's a different crowd that, you know, the people who actually own the unit, and I'm kinda surprised on where you will even authorize there on, on that kinda caliber of, you know, development you can do, because you know, like me, renter, it's a different, you know, it's a different commitment that owning the place, if you own the place, that's, you're gonna be really, really careful. Most of renters are probably the one I had at one point, but some don't, so that worries me. And the other fact is that when, when that stuff is voted on and go back to the planning, we don't, we have no control on it. So when I hear we're gonna talk about it at FMDP, I don't like it, because I would like to make sure before we approve that, if it's approved, that we have that commitment that, because that's, that's one of the stuff we heard the most. People don't want short-term rentals, and I, you know, I kinda agree that we should not have short-term rentals in condos, because, you know, if you have, if you have a three-bedroom house in a, in a county back there, and nobody around, and just the cars, and, you know, nobody cares, but on a condo, now, we have noise ordinances and all that stuff, but now you're gonna have to call the PD, the PD's gonna come, and all that stuff. So I, I would really like that commitment before that, and that's five weeks, you know? If you have four, I know you can make it happen, if you have four, four people who looking at buy, please talk to them about it, and come back, come back to us with something. I would really appreciate that.
One, one point you made on the investor sales, we, I've already got a couple of potential condo buyers that absolutely want a condo, but they don't need it right now, but they don't wanna miss out. So they wanna buy it, and whether they let a family member live there, whether they do, it could be a long-term lease, it could be a number of things, but we definitely will have some of that. And so we wanna accommodate, you know, everything, and at this point, trying to be really restrictive on what we're thinking is, without gathering all the information we need, I think is a little bit difficult. I think at the end of the day, whatever we come up with, I think the council will like it, and I think the people of the neighborhood will like it. There's gonna be some people who won't like anything, so take that back a second, but I think most people will like what we come up with.
That's normal. And another thing, we heard a lot about the neon sign, I know it's not authorized in a code, but it's on every rendering we seen, is that giant...
I love the neon sign. I do like it. I hope y'all like it.
I, I seen the neon sign on the, on the hotel back there, on, on station camp, when they open, that, that stuff is just, that was a good, good thing.
Probably flashing.
Pink, too. Now we go to another country right there. You know your classics. But yeah, you know, that can be, I don't know, maybe you need to do something about that.
We currently don't allow neon, they would have to get variants to do neon.
Could you speak up?
I think that was for you, Mayor. I don't think they could hear you.
They couldn't hear in the back, that we don't allow neon signs.
Oh, I just said we don't allow neon. I mean, they'd have to give variants for that.
I know, but that, that was my point. We, we don't allow neon, but it's on every rendering, so that could have been...
Won't get approved unless they get a...
Unless they get an exemption, but, you know, like me, exemption have only the name, exemption. Yeah. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, but yeah, if you can get us something before, you know, in the next four weeks, that would be great.
Vice Mayor Hayes?
Any other questions?
This has to do with the dredging, but I think, you know, that was brought up, but I think that Bobby had stressed this, too. Bobby knows a lot about this, that...
We can't control the dredging. We can't limit or do anything with dredging.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll let Paige go ahead.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I thought you were gonna ask.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
No, that was it.
Greg, she's mean like that a lot of the times.
Now, what I was getting at is that the dredging is, that is done by the Corps of Engineers, so we have nothing to do with dredging. So I just want everybody to know that from, you know, that we have nothing to do with that. They come in here and say it does not need to be dredged, and then y'all have to come back and have to dredge it. I mean, that's, that's, it's on them, right?
Yeah, we don't, the study that was done, there's no dredging needed to put in our phase that we have submitted.
We talked about the new, the new parking space who got added on the back of the clubhouse. Who's gonna own this space?
Well, the condo owners will own the spaces within their building.
I think he's asking about that new lot adjacent to the...
The new lot, where, where you...
The only thing that would be owned by somebody other than either Tennessee Grasslands or Foxland Harbor Marina would be the individual owners of those buildings, and the, the way they are designed now, they're 16-unit buildings, and they have one parking space underneath the building. All the other surface parking would be owned either by Tennessee Grasslands or Foxland Harbor Marina.
How many shops do you anticipate being in this? This definition says shops.
The shops? We've got 13,000 square feet of retail or office. Part of that's gonna be the office for the Marina and boat rentals, boat sales, whatever for that. Part of that's gonna be a ship store, and maybe the ice cream is part of that, maybe the sandwich shop is part of that, but we intend on not exceeding that 13,000 square footage limit. It might end up being a little bit less, but I think that would be the maximum.
I'd just like to make a statement, and when I look, look over this crowd, I may be the oldest person in here, but I think our average is probably 50 and over, and I think what we're not pointing out here is opportunity. When I look at these shops, the restaurant, the sandwich shop, the ice cream shop, the coffee shop, the pontoon jet ski rentals and those kinda things, that is jobs that our grandkids can have, maybe even some of us have kids that age, and nobody's pointing out the positives of this. All I've heard is negative, all night. It's the what-ifs. What if somebody doesn't? What, we can pull out a Nashville pipe and have a wreck, it's always a what-if. Give me a good reason, not a what-if, or something always negative. Point something out positive occasionally. Thank you.
Questions, comments on this side? Councilman Chouax, again?
It's not for you, sir. Thank you, I appreciate. So we're gonna add 200-something sleeps, so let's see, it's full. What we do at our level to make sure everything is fine on the lake, and now we have chief is hiding back there, we have one, one water unit, but that means we're gonna need more than that. At high peak, if we have this, this level of, you know, water here, that everything's gonna be rented, and we're gonna have all these boats coming here, and did we even look at that? Because that's not cheap, our level, to make sure safety and, safety on the water is, you know, because you want the positive, yeah, we talk about safety. So what, what are we gonna do at our level? Did we even figure about that?
We put a police boat out there for good policing and community development. TWRA is in charge of the security on the waters, not the city of Gallatin. We like to help, we like to have a presence, we like to keep everybody acting nice towards one another, and get to know our police department. TWRA does enforcement on the water, that is their responsibility. And I know that station camp has become more congested, but I've been in other areas that are routinely more congested. On, on, on peak of times, it's very congested in that area.
Ah, and that's, I agree with you, it's more and more congested, and again, there is what's on the paper and the real life. I was on the 109 today going, going to Watertown down there. I'm pretty sure when they did the 109, they say, you know, we put two lane there, four lane there, center lane, everything's gonna be fine, and I come back to what Nick was saying about, you know, traffic light, they, they just push it back, and I trafficked for two and a half miles where I was bumper to bumper, and I'm pretty sure the traffic at that time say it's gonna be great, so...
I don't really get your point with that. I mean, but again, that's a jurisdictional issue, that is the state road, the lake is not our authority.
No, no, but it's to show the difference between what's, what's on the paper, the study, and what happened in real life. Studies are great, but...
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm really lost, so I apologize. I'm really lost.
That's okay. You know, I, I don't think the, the traffic, the traffic is gonna work there, and I still have a lot of concern about our public, public access there, for sure. That's, I don't, when I look at that plan, I don't see how that, it's not gonna be an issue there. It's not gonna be an issue. You put some private, private stuff in the middle of a public access, that, that's gonna create a lot of problem.
I'm just looking at all these shops, this is gonna be a minimum of 100 high school and college-age kids that can work in this area right here, and that's conservative. I'd like to ask Mr. Goodall, how many square feet is the restaurant gonna be?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Say again?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
We have, I think we put it on the plans at 3,500 square feet, and that would include the kitchen and the interior restaurant, but it would probably, you know, have some umbrella tables and chairs out on the patio also.
My estimate's a minimum of 20 jobs in that one area, and it's probably gonna be more like 30, when you include everybody, your maintenance, your cooks, your servers, whatever. The ice cream shop's, it's gonna do the same, it's probably gonna have a minimum of five employees. The sandwich shop, there'll be a couple full-time, and the rest probably part-time. The ice cream shop will have a minimum of six, the coffee shop can have up to 10. I have experience in some of this, that's the reason I can say this. I figured three for their rental, because you're not gonna have the same person there all the time. The fuel dock service, that's probably a college kid's job, and that's not including the shops you're talking about. If you figure just two or three deep shops, you're well over 100 jobs. It's for college-age and high school kids that need jobs, that want jobs. It's great training.
If you find people to work, because every, every restaurant has step in, they, they tell me they don't have enough people to work, so that's a...
The opportunity's there, though, if they want it.
Yeah, opportunity's there, that doesn't mean they're gonna take it.
Call this question?
Second.
I have a question to call, we don't have a motion that's been...
There is no motion, so... Make a motion to defer to table.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Motion to send it on council.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Carter, descend it forward to council. Second by Vice Mayor Hayes. No further discussion.
Now, you realize this is just court session, has to go through one, one reading...
Public hearing.
Public hearing and second reading, so...
I think Rose has something.
Something we've messed up on.
If I may, during your discussion and vote on this, if you can, please address the, the addition request for the conditions.
For the recommended conditions of approval that you and engineering have, you would like to see those added, so if someone is inclined to make a motion to...
Motion ahead, though.
Motion by Councilman Jones, second by Councilman Carter.
Can we re-put this condition on the screen, by any chance?
What?
Can we put them back on the screen? Because that was an hour something ago, so...
Councilman Hayes, the roundabout, and the term... Motion to hike the roundabout and turn into the public area.
I would like to make an amendment to the condition that...
Oh, you have?
The roundabout was actually functional before the start of the project.
I think we need to go back to the First Amendment that was offered. Vote on that, and then you can offer that, so, right? Because they have an amendment in the second.
Sure, you're the boss.
Okay, so let's vote on that. Now, I mean, I want to make sure I'm doing it right. Motion second, all in favor of the First Amendment to add the conditions to move forward to council. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Mr. Joe Botts has a second amendment.
That the roundabout was functional prior to, like we did a lot for, issue any permit to...
Land disturbance.
Land disturbance permit.
How would they build a roundabout?
Except for the roundabout.
Offered by Councilman Juwansz. Second by Alexandra. A motion second. Questions on that? I just have concern about the utility of it, building it, because I think that probably involves reconstructing the entrance and all of that. But y'all can vote on it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, that amendment is not approved. So now we have...
Water call, please.
Huh?
Water call.
What?
Water call.
Oh, okay. Ms. Kitchell, would you please call the roll for Mr. Juwansz?
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Hayes?
No.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
No.
Councilman Fann?
No.
Councilman Fennell?
No.
Councilman Jones?
No.
Councilman Juwansz?
Yes.
Five to two.
Still fails. So it will move forward to council with those, with the conditions added as requested. Are you all ready to vote on that as now amended, to move forward to council? Okay. All in favor of moving ordinance 02507-40 as amended forward to council, please say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, four to two. I have Alexandra and Ju... I mean, five to two, sorry, I can't even add now. Five to two, Councilman Alexander and Juwansz voting against it and everyone else voting for it, correct? So it passes five to two on to council. Okay, item two is ordinance 02507-42. It's an ordinance to the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, zoning 11.965 acres to the PGC Plan, General Commercial District, 33.167 acres to the MU Mixed Juice District, and 38.683 acres to the R10 PRD Medium-Densey Residential Plan, Residential District, and approval of preliminary master development plan for the Station Camp Master Plan on five parcels totaling 83.82 acres north of Highway 386, west of Big Station Camp, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So this item, again, had been before you on a previous work session, council committee meeting. Really, the discussion was regarding a potential condition of approval for timing of development of the commercial parcels. And I'd like to just give the applicant some time to come up and address that issue for the council.
Can I ask a question before we go on? Ask a question before...
Of course.
All right. Question I've got is that I think this is already set up to go to, we passed this on first reading, right?
And we sent it back to this work session.
Sent it back to discuss what we had...
It's already passed first reading.
Right. So it's going to public hearing next week regardless, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. Okay. We were just discussing it tonight, okay.
Good evening. Justin Hartung, I'm with Maris, 122 DeMarbrim Street, Suite 1200, Nashville, Tennessee, First of all, I just wanted to thank you for this long night and allowing us to squeeze in here on the agenda. I wanted to thank the council members, the mayor, the planning department, for all the continued collaboration on this project with us. Maris is over a century-old employee-owned company with a reputation for delivering best-in-class projects. We've been in Nashville for over 10 years and currently have over 40 employees who work out of our office here locally. We've delivered several projects here in Sumner County, including a medical office building for Vanderbilt University Medical Center, Class A multifamily project in Hendersonville, and the Simpson Strong-Tie facility right here in Gallatin on Airport Road, which the slate opened up later this year. We're here today to talk about the proposed condition of tying in the retail to our residential or multifamily development elements of this project. While we understand the goal of connecting the commercial and the residential elements of this project, unfortunately, it's not really a feasible, feasible when we really believe that ultimately it's going to distract from the overall quality of the commercial elements that we would like to curate at this location. Our team sees a real opportunity to create a high-quality mixed-use project that has different types of consumer goods, restaurants, coffee shops, pedestrian orientation experience. We have learned that achieving the quality that we want takes time, and we don't want to have the added pressure to accept a quick service restaurant or convenience store or gas station that comes along. We've had discussions with our lenders and our attorneys and have been told by both them that this would really make many of the elements of this project difficult to not only finance, but also to restrict these conditions in this type of manner on this project. Maris, as the master plan developer, believes that in the retail at this location, we, you know, will be spending millions of dollars upon full approvals to install all the infrastructure required to attract high-quality retail tenants. However, you know, we cannot be restricted in the delivery of the multifamily or the residential portions of this project based on the timing that the market brings the retail here. With that, I just wanted to say thank you again for the opportunity, the collaboration. We remain very excited about this project and excited to continue on discussions and seek your continued support for approval of this plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
You know where I stand on that project, there are pieces I like, pieces I don't, but and even if I like commercial, I think we need to be fair with everybody. I think we can't pick and choose which development we're going to ask to put commercial first and residential after or not. That was not asked on the other side of the road, so why suddenly I said? Because if we start picking and choosing, well, I would like to know why then and not someone else. And if we ask them to put the commercial before, I want the same ask on the next project that's going to come in front of us where the commercial parcel on the front, I want the same ask. I want the commercial built before the residential. So if we're not ready to do that, or even open ourselves for Pandora's Box, I'm pretty sure Susan doesn't want, I don't think we should ask that. You know, I think it's going to be a good development, even if I still don't like the apartment and the townhouses. There is some good component there, but I'm with you there. I don't think we should ask you that.
And I want to thank you, too. I appreciate y'all doing the research. Kelly's been great to work with. I've talked to her numerous times over the last, you know, month, and, you know, it's been, and I totally understand what y'all are talking about, so... Question I've got for y'all, are y'all, I'm assuming y'all are contributing to the Station Camp Road Fund, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes. We're obviously putting in all the infrastructure, too, through the rest of the development.
What about the signal that's going up?
That's tied to it?
No.
That's already approved, I believe, and already in the works of, and it's all correct in the next couple of years.
So Nick, they wouldn't be part of that, the signal?
It should be activated in two months.
Okay.
Before they even start.
Okay, got you. I didn't know, so, okay. But I do, I appreciate y'all's comments and everything on that.
Else with anything? Do we need action, or is this just informational? Thank you very, very much. Y'all go home. All right. Item three, Gregory Annexation Study for a portion of a parcel totaling 327.12 acres. Tax map 106, parcel 3003500, located south of Highway 31, north of Gateway Drive. Mr. Rose, this is your last performance of the evening.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a request, again, as you stated, to annex 327.12 acre, plus or minus acre portion of a parcel into the city. It's located south of Highway 31E and north of Gateway Drive. Just to give you your bearings on that, 31E is up here and Gateway Drive is down in here somewhere, right around where Facebook is, which is all of that. So a couple of the points to make note of on this, again, the contiguity of the parcel generally runs along this spot here, of course, because this is contiguous and because the parcel connects via a half-street portion of right-of-way that runs here right along Bright's Lane at the end of Roundtree here, and then connects to the remainder of the parcel up above. That is why it is contiguous. Just as a point of note, we did have, the parcel actually includes a piece right here that's kind of in hashed-out area, which is on the other side of Bright's Lane. That part is outside of our urban growth boundary, and so we had them remove that from the legal description of the property to be annexed in order to make sure that we didn't cross over a boundary that we shouldn't. And you can see that in a little bit clearer detail here. And the further zoom in, again, highlights this area where it's still white in between there. One other point to note is that Roundtree Drive is not a part of the proposed annexation at this time. It is a desire of the city, at least from the engineering division's standpoint, to try to get that annexed at some point, although that is not under the ownership of this property owner, and so they don't have the ability to apply for that portion. We would have to work it out with the county, whether it be through them deeding the property to us and then we annex into the city, or work it through them and get permission from them to be able to annex Roundtree Drive. Of course, the study has been included in your packets tonight and didn't really have any outstanding issues, major outstanding issues with regards to that. All of the standard issues are applicable. We would need additional public utilities and, of course, fire, police, planning services, building code services would all be available. Past that, the property is being proposed to be annexed as a future industrial use, and that industrial use classification would, if it were to attain zoning for industrial, would have to also be accompanied by a comprehensive plan amendment, because that area is shown on our maps as a rural area. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Rose.
It's not directly to you, but it's related to what you just said about, because we made that clear, so we're going to have to change the plan garant. And so where I have a concern, again, is that right now, first, I don't think we should annex more land, because we just did a bond to buy, to traffic light, so I don't think we can afford to annex more land right now. And we still, again, as usual, in default, plan of service, previous annexation, but why don't we do things in the right order first? That means we change the plan garant, we put that area industrial, and when we have that done, they come back and we annex in their land as industrial. Because the issue and the concern I have is that if we annex now and suddenly they decide to, that's going to be high-density residential. So if it's annexed and they decide to go residential, we have no recourse anymore. So why don't, for once, we do the things in the right order? If they tell us, you know, if they annex now or later, they save on tax. They should be happy about that. Instead of paying tax in the city, they just pay the county part. And we, as a body, say we're going to change the plan garant, change...
Mr. Rose has presented his report as requested. I still don't think it's appropriate to try and debate with department heads. If you want to comment, that's fine, but address it to the body and don't try and debate with the department head who's doing what they were asked to do. Please.
No questions.
No bar can be in there. Anyone with any questions for Mr. Rose, that way he presented?
I'm scared to ask. What about the people in Roundtree? I mean, how will that affect the people over in Roundtree?
Mike?
The mic on?
Put your microphone.
Oh, my bad.
People in Roundtree, how will that affect the people in Roundtree?
I assume you're asking about those residents kind of near the end over here?
Yes, sir.
On Roundtree?
Yes, sir.
I mean, they would then become adjacent to city limits. They would not be annexed as part of the annexation request. But, and if this portion of Roundtree were annexed, that would end up stopping at this point before it heads into that little subdivision area that they live on. So they would still all kind of be, remain in the county.
I had a few asking about annexation on their, where they live.
Oh, no, no, we wouldn't touch them. Couldn't legally by state law.
And with any future action on whether it be comprehensive plan amendment or rezoning or site plans or anything like that, there will be site postings up in that area, so they'll be notified when those types of actions are coming up.
As the adjacent property owners. Any other questions for Mr. Rose? Mr. Rose, please go home. We all owe he and his wife a debt of gratitude. He has spent his 27th anniversary with us. We apologize, but we say thank you, but we also say congratulations. 27 years. Get, 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 get. Thank you. Okay, let's move along to item number four, which is Resolution R2508-... Okay, let's move along to item number four, which is resolution R2508-48. Mr. Tuttle, resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin and Kennesaw Farms Phase Six, Section Two.
Item number four, Kennesaw Phase Six, Section Two, it's a request for acceptance recommended by the planning commission, a portion of Appaloosa Way, Peyton Lane, and the entirety of Warlander Way, kind of up in the north piece of the old Kennesaw Farms development off Lieutenant Gibson Circle.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions, any discussion? It's resolution R2508-48. All in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moves forward to council unanimously. Item five is resolution R2508-49, resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin and Kennesaw Farms Phase Four. Did you address that? And I just blew right over.
No, you're, I did not.
Okay, section three, Mr. Tuttle.
I didn't put them together this time. This is, because they're not really, they're in the same subdivision, but not really linked, so. Kennesaw Farms, Phase Four, Section Three, this is stuff that was actually built a long time ago. We talked about the recession really hitting and slowing some developments down, and this is one of the phases that was affected. This is off of Kennesaw Boulevard and includes a few alleys, Kennesaw Alley Number Two, Kennesaw Alley Number 15, and a portion of Paddock Park Circle, which is on the north side of Kennesaw Boulevard, back in that back left-hand corner. And this was, of course, recommended unanimously by our planning commission for acceptance.
Motion to send it on.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions, any discussion? It's resolution R2508-49. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Moves forward unanimously. Item six is resolution R2508-51. It's a resolution to update the city of Gallatin compensation plan by replacing data quality engineer, training administrator, system administrator position to code system specialist within the codes department. And Ben Harris is here.
This is due to a vacancy that we had in our department. Coast Department would like to replace the data quality engineer, training administrator, system administrator, HJ, with the position of code system specialist, HI, to broaden the qualified advocate pool and redistribute, streamline duties within the code department.
Motion by Councilman Carter, second by Councilman Jones. Questions, discussion? This was the position we had upgraded for someone who had acquired a lot of specific skills, and that person has left the city, and we don't necessarily, we wouldn't be likely to find someone with that skill set, so we're taking it back down some. It's resolution R2508-51. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Resolution R2508-53. It's a resolution, resolution to authorize the city of Gallatin to apply for a State of Tennessee Tourism Enhancement Grant. Ms. Jenna Lindstrom.
Good evening, council. Thank you for saving the best for last.
Oh.
Standard procedure. I have a really exciting project in mind if we do receive this grant, so I would appreciate the support to apply for it.
Motion to send off. Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions, any discussion?
Are you allowed to say right now what the project is? I'm just curious.
It has, it's involving a member of our community.
A public card installation.
Yes.
Okay, cool deal. Got it.
All in favor of sending resolution R2508-53 forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does move forward with unanimous support. Concludes the regular agenda, brings us to other business. Does anyone have any other business this evening? Department head reports. Again, I feel like we're like freshmen in college. If anybody were to dare stand up, you might shoot arrows from your eyes. No, I'm kidding. No other business from department heads, so you know what the motion needed is.
Motion to adjourn.
By Councilman Carter, second by Councilman Fennell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for your patience with this very long meeting. Have a lovely night and a great week ahead. Congratulations to Liberty Creek Station Camp and Gallatin High School for a great pep rally on the square tonight. So sorry we couldn't be there. God bless you all.